Okay, if anybody at the CMC is up there ready, okay, the cameras are moving, that means we're ready. All right, I'm gonna call this September fourteenth meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council to order, let's start with the pledge.
Oh, oh, they switched.
Yes, pull me off here. They moved the flag on me this month.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now technically, is it not supposed to be on this side?
Peter, we will check.
You want, do you want to switch it now?
We don't have to switch it now, let's do it after the meeting.
We raised it up higher.
Yes, yes, it should be higher, and I think it should be on that side.
It probably should be.
If I remember correctly.
One thing at a time here.
Yeah, one thing at a time.
Government works slow. It's gonna take a couple of months to get the flag over there.
Let's not go there.
Okay, I don't see any guest speakers in the audience tonight, so we've got two presentations from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
You did not send it to me. Did you just not send it?
I did send it.
It was in the last meeting.
Hold on, let me snap though.
Did you send it?
Hold up my tablet.
Let me look and then send it up.
Pause, go ahead.
Okay.
She's gonna go up and look in her email.
I'm gonna jump ahead one moment, so we can get, I don't know, something that the mayor's, in addition to having a habit of breaking tablets, apparently he's lost more. It's gonna be hard on him. All right, we've got council minutes to approve, we've got the August third minutes, public hearing, the August third town council meeting, and the August third closed minutes. Anybody see any changes that we need to make?
I'll make them.
Move together.
Okay, I gotta, gotta move and a second, for the record. Scott, move, Bob seconded.
In turn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's move on to the police report. Corporal Johnson?
Evening.
Evening.
All right, for the police report, Corporal Johnson representing the Mountain State Police, for the month of August, we had 427 town calls, handled 20 calls out of town assisting the Barrick and Sheriff's Department. We took 34 criminal investigation reports, arrests. We had 24 arrests this month, 13 adults, two juveniles, one DUI, seven warrants, four civil citations for under 10 grams of marijuana, and patrol checks, 201 total. They broke up into 31 residential, 92 business checks, school, 43 business checks. Traffic stops, 232, issued 124 citations, 147 warnings and 50 prepare orders. Accidents are about the same as every other month, around 13, there were 13 this month, five which were reportable, which means an accident report was created and four people were charged in those accidents, eight minor superficial accidents. And notable reports for the month of August was obviously the malicious destruction of property. We had two adults charged and one juvenile arrested involved in that. Over, over 30 hours of investigation with, with three troopers involved in that.
Thanks, I know that was a hot topic in the town, was the vandalism and Jimmy Cone sign being ripped down, and other things like that, so, but it was good work getting those guys.
Court date's upcoming, so I'll keep you guys posted.
Corporal Johnson, I want to commend you on your great work in that particular case. I also want to thank you for putting that on the police blotter and to remind the citizens that we actually do have a police blotter on our town website for issues. Also, I believe Monica did a drive around with you?
Trooper Barry, she did a ride along with Trooper Barry.
Okay, I would encourage all the council members that haven't already done so, I believe a few of them have, but a few of the newer council, well, you're not newer anymore, are you? A few of the council members that have not did a drive around, it's a good opportunity to learn what our officers really do, what they face in our community, especially as we're looking at our public safety options, so, I think they can arrange that directly with you.
Just contact me and I'll set something up if anybody's interested.
Will you let them do the siren?
If they want to, turn the lights on, you know.
I wanna shoot the gun!
Can't drive though unfortunately.
My bad.
It was sitting in drafts.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, volunteer fire company, Bruce, Jeff, which, which we, got it, all right. Welcome.
Good evening. Hi, for the month of August, there was a total of 181 calls, 101 in Carroll, 67 in Frederick, 8 in Howard, and 5 in Montgomery. Only other thing we got coming up is the sixth annual memories fundraiser on Wednesday night. They'll be donating 10 percent of everything they make from open to close, including carryouts and lunch. We'll be there about 6 o'clock selling raffle tickets, 50-50s pool tabs, and also raffling off two tickets to the Orioles Yankees game on October 2nd. So if anybody wants to stop out, buy some tickets and give us some support with that. That's all I got.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, move on to those presentations.
My apologies to Debbie, that was my draft box.
No problem.
On September 21st, 2009, a fire broke out at 11:21 PM on Hill Street. Neighbors quickly arrived on the scene, notably Rick Nellinger, did I pronounce that right? Rick Nellinger, who risking his own life crawled into the burning structure and bravely pulled the occupant out to safety before professional firefighters arrived. Excuse me, my phone clicked off. Thanks to his efforts, and that of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, and Walter Stone, who also played a role, the homeowner survived. If you get a chance, please stop by and thank Rick, who's also owner of Rick's Chop Shop, barber shop at the Castle Shopping Center by Prospect Park. This is the first ever award for heroism that I know of that has been issued in the town of Mount Airy, it's about six years overdue. We correct things when we can. First, I would like to call Walter Stone to the podium for an outstanding citizenship award. Walter was right at the brink of the fire outside of the house while Rick physically crawled in. Walter stayed there risking his own life as well, and took the recipient, the resident, from Rick and then pulled him to safety. So for that act, you are receiving an outstanding citizenship award. An appreciation of you going above and beyond to assist in the emergency situation when a fire broke out on Hill Street. On September 21st, 2009, your actions helped save a life. The town is proud to have an outstanding citizen such as you. This award is hereby presented to Walter Stone this date, 9/14/2015. Walter, congratulations.
Okay. You get used to stuff after a while.
I'd like to ask Rick Nellinger, I've never, I always called you Rick, I didn't even know your last name, I didn't know you had a last, I thought you were like Cher. This is the first ever mayoral certificate of heroism. As I read in the bio, and no sense to read it again, this is in recognition of Rick's heroism, and actually physically crawling into the fire. It was filled with smoke, it was filled with flames, the guy belly crawled, commando crawled in there, grabbed the guy and pulled him out. I don't know if it was a smart thing to do or not, but your actions saved a life. We appreciate it, you are a hero sir.
All right, this is a time that I've set aside, we have set aside for citizen concerns, citizen comments. If you want to address the council on some topic, typically one that's not on the agenda somewhere, because we'll address that when we get to it in the agenda, if you just want to address the council on some issue, line up on the wall here at the podium and we'll hear what you have to say. We ask you to limit it to fairly short set of comments, because sometimes it can be long, but... Dick?
Hi, I'm Dick Swanson, I'm with the Mount Airy Main Street Association, I just want to remind everybody, this coming week is History 101, and we've been doing this a number of years. There are talks on various subjects on September 21st, 22nd, 23rd. Saturday, right here, is Oscar Baker. Encourage everybody to come on down and ask him some questions, I think it's 1:30 in the afternoon, about what life was like in Mount Airy. Some of those subjects, by the way, that are going to be presented are women in the Civil War, fighting on both sides, and it's an interesting topic. In addition, rationing during World War II is going to be one of the subjects discussed. It's all week, I suggest you go to mountairymainstreet.org and take a look at the full schedule. It also includes this year, Walk with the Mayor is Saturday, and that's a walk here, 10 AM I think it starts, here at Town Hall, and it's going to be a walking mayor's forum through Rails and to Trails, and up to Watkins Park and back, so it's an opportunity to come down and ask the mayor whatever questions you may have about the town, or comments you may have, and we appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Question, Dick, is it recorded with Oscar Baker, is that recorded?
I don't know if it's gonna be recorded this year, it has been recorded several other years.
We have videotaped them in the past.
Yes.
It might be good, I mean, if we can do it.
Yeah, Oscar's a wealth of information.
We're not gonna have him forever, so.
Yeah, I'll check into that.
I remember Dick and I stumbling one year to grab some kind of recording device to get him on tape.
He will not however be doing, from personal experience, the Civil War part.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that.
The World War II one, he probably knows all about.
Yes, he did serve in World War II, I believe in Europe, and he was injured over
there, and so he's also a war hero.
Yeah, and Dick, just if I could expand on that a little bit, if you've never taken part in this, I mean, it's really, your town comes alive through the voice of this senior gentleman that lived it, and he really animates it well, he talks about it, he brings pictures, so, if you have a love for your hometown, or if you want to get a renewed love for your old town, or just get a love for your town, listen to this guy, it's phenomenal, it's really worth your time to come down, and you just learn so much about our rich history.
Yes, yes, I encourage everybody, Ted. Mount Airy Main Street, all spelled out, dot org.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks, Ted.
Thanks, Dick. Anybody else? Ah, here we go.
My name's Carl Munder, I live in Sterling Glen, so I'll be back up discussing the school realignment since it seems to be on the, what do you call it, the agenda, but I was notified by a neighbor that she would like to also inquire about the streetlights being put, what's the status of the streetlights being installed in the second half of Sterling Glen community?
They're still working on them.
Still working on, Eddie?
I know there was some question about the conduits not being, there's a couple places where the conduits are not attached, so.
Yeah, I think they've all addressed all that, so we're just looking for an update, because it's kinda, you know, it's getting darker down there, so this is my HRA request, number, request.
If that's been addressed, then.
I think it has, it looks like they have.
Probably is trying to schedule it.
Okay.
I know power companies trying to schedule a couple of projects for us too.
Okay.
Can you leave your name and number with the town administrator so Monica can report back to you the status?
Yeah, that won't be a problem.
The school issue, we're gonna, we're gonna address.
Yes, yeah.
We're gonna address that tonight.
Yeah, so then I'll be back up giving my comments on that, since Peter Hell said, wait, wait for that.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Right.
Anyone else? Let me get a quick show of hands, how many people are here on the school issue? Okay.
Let's bring that up first.
Yeah, I'm, so rather than make everybody wait to where it is, which is, you know, way down.
Way at the end.
Yeah, on the agenda.
Should we move into next meeting?
Why don't we, why don't we push it on?
Just kidding.
So we're gonna go ahead and, and roll into that, however, you know, let me just also let everybody know, there's nothing that this council can do about anything that the Board of Ed is going to do. They, they don't answer to us in any way, however, given that, I would like the council to give the mayor authority to contact.
Before we go there, there's some background I'd like to share.
All right, go ahead.
So, basically, the Board of Education gave two options. One of the options was closing Charles Carroll School, that would align 4,000 students, and not really give them a whole lot of bang for their buck. The second option would realign or reassign 7,000 children, and it would, excuse me, and it would basically close about five schools. And that did give them a lot of bang for their buck. One of the concerns I think this council ought to consider, and I don't think there's gonna be any problem at all with the council's action this evening, I know I've spoke to a few of them, is Mount Airy suffered for years with overcrowded schools, we finally got it right, we finally got it right, and for lack of a better term, we've always been Westminster's cash cow. The taxes come out of this community, they come out of Mount Airy like no other in Carroll County. So to rip that school away from us is, it's improper, it's not the best move. Another reason I think it's a bad idea is, Mount Airy Elementary School is just about at capacity, we're at 85 to 90 percent. The school that they're thinking about realigning the children to, and it's not just 40 students in Sterling Glen, it's about 200 students that live on our portfolio that consider themselves Mount Airy residents. And while we care about them as well, definitely our Sterling Glen residents, and Peter Hell feels very strongly about that, so looking at those two options, I understand there's been mistakes made, I understand the county's gotta make some tough decisions, I support that. I don't think this is the place to make that decision. Given the amount of cuts that are in the second option, I talked to council president already, and I think we ought to ask them, they can stay the course, pull Mount Airy Elementary School off the table. They'll still achieve their goals, and they won't tear up our community, or again, I gotta come up with a better term than cash cow, or affect the cash cow. I mean, we've suffered for far too long in Mount Airy. For those of you that don't know it, haven't been here, from 1990 to 97, we were number one in growth in the state. When I took my daughter out of private school and put her into public school, she spent the first four years in portables. And that's why I became involved in town government, because I was tired of seeing that happen. We finally got it right, let's not screw it up. So as council president said, I would like, I would like the council body and mayor to come together on this, to write a formal letter to the Board of Education, and additionally, as long as I know I have your support, which I know I have council president help support, I'd like to personally call each member of the Board of Education and express these concerns to them personally, and that's the best way to handle it. So with that, if you could.
Yeah, well, I was going to move that we authorized the mayor to call everybody on the, on the school board and write a letter to them basically asking that they not break Mount Airy up further.
And I will second.
We're already two counties, we don't need to be any further divided. I hear a second from Bob.
That's a good point, too.
Any discussion?
That's a good point.
Do we want to hear from people that are here to talk on it, or?
Well, I, what, they may, yeah, it's, I mean, I think this one's, you know, kind of to me a no brainer, then we'll, then we'll hear what they have to say, I mean, I understand.
I gotta tell you, I like your point about divided by two counties.
Yeah, we're already split by two counties, why further divide us?
I'm hitting several issues, and that wasn't one of them, so.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Does anybody else who wants to address us on this issue, go right ahead, but we may have answered the question from any of you.
Is there anything else we can do?
You can go to the Board of Ed directly, and I would call them, go to the meetings, write them letters.
I plan to show up at the meetings and speak, to let you know.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
You could probably show up at the county meetings too.
Right, and you can get, and you can get on their agenda.
Show up, there's an email address, I'm sure you all have it by now. If you don't, does anybody need that email address?
They're typically during, the meetings are typically during the day in Westminster.
And take as many people with you as you can.
That's powered by numbers.
It really is, it, you know, when this many people show up here, it gets our attention.
Yeah, and remember, you do elect them. I mean, they are, they're, you know, they, they serve at the will of the people.
Oh, you all have it here, it's in that report.
Last page.
Your emails away.
Yeah, it's in, it's in, it's in the, it's in the.
Yes, I just had a concern, I think most of us are from the Sterling Glen community, Rachel Hannah, you're from Sterling Glen. So, you know, I know, I'm gonna do everything you said on.
Can I ask just one question? If you can come to the podium, because it says on TV, and people at home complain all the time, if I don't make, if I don't make people come, if, if.
I really am.
I know, but if I, if I don't make, if I don't make people come to the, come to the podium, we get all kinds of complaints that say, you know, I can't hear that person, I don't know what's going on. It's basically like dead air. You know, you tune the TV channel and you see a dead podium, it's, it's bad for our ratings.
I gotcha. Well, I think our primary concern, many of us are from the Sterling Glen community, there's, how many of us right now, if we count the hands? There's one, two, three, four, about 20 of us are in the room from Sterling Glen. And, you know, my concern is, I'm gonna do everything you said about writing letters to the Board of Ed and being an active voice and attending meetings, but if they are convinced about closing Mount Airy Elementary School, where does Sterling Glen stand in that? Like, can we be considered a part of Mount Airy? You know, that's what destroys us.
You're in the town.
You are, but, Peter, I look at, I word it differently than Peter, where they say, we have no official role, but I don't think that means we can't do anything. I think we can do a lot, just by writing these letters, by impacting, by calling. There's other options, I really don't want to put them out on the table right now, one of them is, there's only 40 students from Sterling Glen, it doesn't help the children aren't free that I care about as well, but the children in Sterling Glen are gonna come first.
We represent Sterling Glen.
We represent Sterling Glen.
Okay, excellent.
It's not a big stretch to squeeze them into Pars Ridge, even as much as I hate the word, portables, I'd rather that than squeeze them up there, because if you look at their enrollment, it's gonna start dropping, so they would squeeze in easier, I don't really want to lay that option on the table right now.
Okay.
We want to maintain that school, but there are other options, but let's not throw them out until we get there.
Forty students would be one portable.
Yeah.
So for one portable, they could keep everybody in town.
Yeah, I would throw that out.
And if they're looking at the counting enrollment, it would be one portable for just a couple of years.
Yeah, so there is.
To me, that would make sense.
There's always a Plan B and C, I just don't like using them right away.
I understand, because I know our students would go from a 1.8 mile commute to like 9.3 miles, and it's already 30 minutes to get to our, our homes after school, I can't even imagine, you know, if you're sending kindergartners 10 miles down the road.
And that's the point too, with elementary school children, I mean, I certainly think that middle school or high schoolers are a lot more hardy, and don't pull our little ones, don't pull our wee ones out.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We got you.
Anybody else? Come on, you promised you were gonna get back up here on this topic.
I'm gonna get back up, speak, because the mayor pretty much covered, so this is just gonna be.
Well, I've heard you speak before, I feel I better get ahead of you.
I know, but it's one different subject, so I appreciate not bringing those up right now. Because normally, I'm against stuff, now I'm for stuff, so hey.
I was in your shoes once.
I know. But basically, my name's Carl Munder, I live at 2002 Philbrook Lane in the Sterling Glen community. I just want to say that the community is the only portion of the town that was not, as you all wear, is not included within the redistricting of the schools. So basically, instead of going through the 11 points I was gonna speak over, but, because you all have pretty much covered, I'm just gonna hand these out to the council as potential writing points to be included into the letter, that would just make the whole meeting go quicker and everything out.
We'll take them.
If we use them, you have to promise no plagiarism charges.
Are there gonna be no plagiarism charges or anything else?
I can't, I'm just.
Let the attorney out, for sure.
No, he's the one we never leave back.
I know, he's the one who has the final decisions.
He will be reviewing the law.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Yes, Bill?
Bill Butts 103, East Church Street, just one additional point. In 1967, Mount Airy lost.
Can you give them your title, please, Bill?
I'm, I'm Chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm also a former teacher. In 1967, Mount Airy lost its local high school, and in losing that, it lost an essential point of connection for the community. That was a long time ago. We never fully recovered from that. It's enough when a community is divided by a county line, and in some cases, children that live across the street from one another go to different schools, and so you don't have that point of connection. But every time you've had the benefit of a school, and then you lose it because it gets moved, that's a concern. That's a concern to the essential operation of the community. That in itself is another reason why we don't want to lose.
Good point.
Mount Airy Elementary.
Good point, sir.
Thanks, Bill. All right, anything else? All right, let's jump on to the next topic, and don't feel like you need to stay, that's why we did it earlier, so that you can go home.
Thank you for coming out.
Sure, thanks for coming out.
And expressing.
Up next, ordinance 2015-7, this is the text amendment in the industrial district covering veterinarian practices, animal boarding, and accessory uses. We received a modified copy of that from Tom. If you recall from the emails and everything going out, basically what he did is he redefined a veterinary hospital so that it could not include a crematorium or an incinerator device to solve our concerns like that, he just redefined it so everywhere that that comes up throughout our code, it can include that, basically makes it a separate item. I will move.
I will, I will move.
That we, okay, go ahead, Bob.
I will move that we accept this ordinance as written.
I will second. Any discussion?
What is a planning commission recommendation to strike, I think the words notwithstanding the foregoing, such a facility shall be permitted to have accessory uses, such as fenced, supervised outdoor exercise and play areas, not to include individual outdoor dog runs? It was a, something that came up earlier when this came up.
Right, and I think we, I think we withdrew that at a subsequent meeting, Tom.
We withdrew the fenced area, or, we allowed it.
Yeah, about having outside dog, outside dog play, a fenced play area or something like that.
All right, and it's coming from planning, so that's Bob's department, so.
Yeah, and I, that was, I, I initially tried to remove it, and then I asked that it be added back in at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one?
So in clarification, is it correct the way it is?
It's correct the way it is.
It is correct the way it is, the way it's written.
Yeah, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance 2015-9, this is the ethics section, which we've been bouncing around, we left this on, Ken, I know you're gonna love it, just for you.
You weren't here.
Do we have anybody who wants to, I guess, well, it's been introduced, so the question is, is there anybody who wants to move that we accept it?
I move, we accept it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
We have a second from Jason, we have a motion and we have a second. Ken and Jason, all right, discussion.
Do we ever get input back from the state level with regards to this, or any of the other municipalities?
This, as far as the state's concerned, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this is drafted, this would have addressed the only two areas that the state had a problem with, so this would bring it into conformity, exactly with what the state has reported, has asked us to do. As far as the other jurisdictions that are not yet adopting it, I don't have a recent update, I do know, as we said earlier, that Westminster is in suit, and then Gaithersburg is challenging it, I would say administratively through the state ethics itself.
And they, and they have also asked that we support them in this, because, you know, they're, they're trying to get everybody that has not.
And Hampstead said take a hike.
Right. You know, Hampstead.
Really, I mean, that's really what, that's really what they said.
They've asked that we support them in this and not, and not pass this ordinance, or not, not pass an ordinance that the state will allow.
Dick?
And Carroll County sent a draft that was accepted by the state, but has yet to approve it, so they're still in non-compliance. I, I do want.
You mean the county as a whole?
The county, Carroll County. I just want to bring up something to think about, and that is, this law in terms of financial disclosure for elected officials has certain ambiguities in it, and believe needs certain clarifications, and I'm just gonna give you one example. There's a requirement that you all had placed upon you. So I can see it.
And by the way, I don't think, you identified yourself, Rick, you are chairman of the Ethics Commission.
I'm Dick Swanson, chairman of the Ethics Commission. The question here is interest in corporations and partnerships. It says, did you have any interest in any corporations, partnerships, limited liability partnerships, LLPs, or limited liability companies, LLC, during the reporting period whether or not the entity did business with this state? Now, this is the state, they just gave this, and we're supposed to make the edits to put in with the town of Mount Airy. There is no caveat in this in terms of whether you own one share of stock in something, or you have a majority interest in a company. There was a clarification put out, I believe, that said that if you have a 401K, that, that would be exempt from reporting. However, there was no exception to if you happen to independently be invested in a mutual fund. There is no caveat in here that says you do not have to report anything if you are in a broker managed investment account. And that ambiguity would mean that you technically may have to disclose every single stock you own in any mutual fund or independently. Fortunately, Peter came up with a recommendation on the current law that was passed, and it says that that only has to be reported if it's in five percent or more ownership in the company, which would effectively eliminate brokerage managed investment accounts. It would basically take away any confusion that has to do with mutual funds that you own outside of a 401K. That's just one example of if you literally take the law and apply it. The council, general counsel for the State Ethics Commission basically addressed this question in an MML article. He addressed it a year or so ago here in front of us. And in both cases, he said, well, the state doesn't monitor how that law is applied at the local level. The state merely requires.
He told Bob and I that personally, too.
Yes, and it's sitting at a meeting with us. He said, pass the law and don't enforce it. Am I, that's, that is exactly what he said.
Yeah.
He got so frustrated after half an hour discussion, he said, pass the law and don't enforce it.
So why is the purpose of passing the law then? If you're never gonna enforce it, why pass it?
Well, if I, let me go on just for a moment. Given that, that the local ethics commissions have carte bontche authority, I guess you'd call it, to interpret how you would apply that law. If we were to interpret this one example I'm giving, and let's say we applied the five percent rule, and we said to you, okay, it says you have to report every single stock you own or interest in any other corporate nature. But we're going to be a little liberal about that. And let's say that a citizen says, wait a minute, you know the Ethics Commission is not applying the law of the state of Maryland or the law of the town of Mount Airy? I don't want, as the chair of the Ethics Commission, be put in that position. I don't think that's fair of the state. I don't think it's fair to you that you should have whoever those members of the Ethics Commission may be at the time be put in a position where they are liberally or not so liberally interpreting the law. Therefore, I believe that the state owes every municipality, county, and board of education to the state of Maryland either a clarification or to ask the legislature of the state to change the law. And not just dump it off on local municipalities and then say, okay, it's your problem, do what you want with it, and suffer the consequences, because there's no exception to following the law. And that's a rather peculiar situation of the state to ask of us. It's a bad position to put your Ethics Commission in, and it's a bad position for you to be in at the risk of the whims and whams of the Ethics Commission at the time. Fortunately, nobody had to disclose those investments because we have the five percent rule.
But the state has, but the state has rejected that.
But the state, that is, that is one of the two reasons the state says, we are in noncompliance, and they're putting us on their website as one of the noncompliant bad boys of the state. They do have the ability to take us to court and require us to follow their law. They haven't elected to do that yet. But my caution to you is that by passing this at this time without clarification in writing from the state of Maryland, that we are all being put at some risk, and you're asking your Ethics Commission to take on a responsibility of interpreting the law, which could be construed as any interpretation is a violation.
And, and our understanding right now could go ten years from now.
Yes.
And it could be a very different situation. You know, simply because there is no, there, there's no concrete law here.
There's no, there's no reasonable application, or there's no reasonable provision in the law that takes into consideration what I've just talked about, or the fact that a municipality is different than the state of Maryland and its size, the representatives, and the size of the budget they wield, the power they wield, the influence they wield versus a local municipality. And there should be some reasonable provisions in there in the law itself that allow flexibility to the extent that the size of your municipality, the budget, and the power that you wield is properly reflected in what you need to disclose.
Scott?
So what are our options now? I mean, because we've been kind of going along with this. We're already listed. I mean, do we just keep deferring it until a decision's made? Do we have to formally write a letter saying, again, we don't agree with this, it's noncompliance, as our chair of ethics is kind of directing us?
If we vote this down, I think Dick will write them a letter saying it was turned down. Is that what happens?
Well, the Ethics Commission can write a letter, the town council can write a letter. We could join up with Carroll County and, and Westminster and Gaithersburg and write something jointly.
I, I think that a combination of all three, if I can make a recommendation to this body, would be beneficial. The words that Dick is saying, but putting the onus on the Ethics Commission or whoever's in that position to have that responsibility, where the state is just passing it on and telling them to deal with it, is kind of absurd. The fact that there's already litigation and other municipalities that are fighting against this, I would be for not only supporting the Ethics writing a letter, this body writing the letter, and joining up forces with the other municipalities at this time, until such time that there is some resolution that comes out of it with regards to this.
Pat, is that up, Ken?
Yes, it is. I agree with everything Scott said. I would just caution, since this is a legal issue, run it through Tom.
If we do a letter, obviously.
If the Ethics Commission, they run everything through Tom.
Before we make a decision here at this table, it's look like we're going to.
Jason, is the only, I'm just trying to wrap my head so that I can understand what other municipalities are doing. Is it the five percent that is up for discussion? And if so, what is, other municipalities that have signed on? Have they taken something like this similar and have passed it?
I have not looked at those that have been approved, their ethics ordinances. There are slight wording changes, most of them that, from the few I've seen, are really were edits where they use the word state. I know in the law, we had to change it because they said when you have legislative sessions and they use terms like that, a lot of it was just to correct it so it talked about a municipality. But the content of it, as I understand, basically is the same as what the state requires for those municipalities that have had their ethics laws approved. Also, my understanding is that if you take a look at the first year, year and a half, when this requirement became effective, that the majority of municipalities in the state of Maryland objected to it, did not agree with it, but caved into it just so they could move on past the subject. How, but there, I say, to date, now there are four, well, three municipalities in one county that are technically in noncompliance. The issues vary from, from the different reasons why those four take exception. And I think some of them even take greater exception than we do, and they've also taken exception. I think, was it Gaithersburg is the one that's saying that filed suit that said they believe that you're right to make those edits in there and interpret your, your law to fit your situation allows them greater latitude than the state allows.
They believe it's Westminster that's in suit on that, and then I'm, I know that Gaithersburg is pursuing exactly that theory.
Right. So they're taking the cross-the-board approach.
Dick, the majority of municipalities have been exempted.
That is exactly right. Hundred fifty-seven municipalities in the state of Maryland.
More than half of them were exempted from complying.
Eighty-eight were exempted, okay, which leaves way less than half. And, you know, it's, it's an arbitrary, they, they can't tell you why they chose an arbitrary number, but they did.
They'll, they'll tell you that there is a, a group of criteria they use, but my understanding from what I see is the fundamental criteria is your population, and the population is less than three thousand or so, you're exempt.
They just made that up, though.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there's no.
I mean, there's no statute that says that or code that says that. They just made that rule up.
They're prejudiced against bigger municipalities.
Well, they've never, they've never provided rationale of how they came to that number.
Jason, the biggest.
There is no subjective criteria.
The biggest issue, I, I think from my perspective, and is the fact that this is something that's not really called for anywhere else. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people that are government employees, and they'll say, well, I have to supply all this information when I work in the federal government. The difference is, we have to turn this all over for the public. This is publicly available information.
Right.
It would be one thing if they said you have to turn this over to the town Ethics Commission, and the town Ethics Commission keeps this data. But basically what this does, this allows anybody who wants to to basically steal our identity.
Come, come right in here and ask.
Come right in here and get everything they need to know about us, every, every property we own, every stock we own, every whatever we're involved with.
So our problem is not with disclosing, it's how it's being disclosed.
It's, it's the fact that it's public, it's the fact that it's publicly available data. And note, none of these, if you work for the government, you could supply all this. It is kept secured. It is not something that anybody can get their hands on. We're required to make it public. Scott?
Go ahead. Just to speak to what the mayor said, our, our problem is twofold. One is what's Peter talking about, which is that the Ethics Commission were responsible for that data, which is now publicly available, one hundred percent of it. And the other problem is, if you were required to disclose every stock you owned, what does that mean if you own a broad-based mutual fund? Are you just gonna staple on your, your, your sta, so it's an administrative burden, and it's overreaching in terms of what the Ethics Commission needs to do its job. So those are the two basic reasons.
I don't have a clue what are my funds. I paid somebody to do that.
Yeah, we're not, we're broken with disclosure in general.
Scott?
So, to tag on real quick, as far as federal goes, yes, it's secure. As far as Dick ended up saying, anybody can come in and request your information at any time for any reason, and it gets turned over to them. That said, one of the other problems that was kind of highlighted in here was that, for us, it's no big deal. Okay, for me, I work for federal government, don't have a problem with it, put my information out there. It's part of my job, okay? But when it comes to, you have to not only tell your information, but then you have to tell everything about your wife, you have to tell everything about your kids, you have to tell everything that is in your life, that does not apply to you doing this job. That's where it's too far overreaching, and that's what this still allows, that they would not, in my opinion, come to a common ground of, hey, five percent, we only care about you, we want to make sure you're not doing any, anything unethical, we'll protect your identity, et cetera. They wouldn't, the state would not come and meet us halfway.
So how far, how far up the chain does something like this go? Are we talking about just the municipalities, or is it state delegates?
They took, they took state, they took the state congress, the whole nine yards, and just said, we're gonna apply the same thing we have to do up at this level where you get millions of dollars, and put it down to you, even to volunteers, they're thrown in here for our different commissions, that they have to apply to part of this and follow those rules as well. And, you know, I think it's, it's just way too overreaching just for town government.
Although we have had delegates and state senators in here to talk to us about this, and they all looked at this and said, oh, I'm not disclosing any of that stuff. So it's very clear that the, that the plan is you pass these things, but you don't actually do it. I'm not gonna do that.
That's, that's not why we're here.
And actually, that's what the state basically told us to do.
Right.
Pass it, but just, you know, have your, have your Ethics Commission not enforce it.
Pass it, liberally interpret it, and if, and if there's a problem with that, they wash their hands of it.
So Jason, as a new, new councilperson, this issue's been going on forever with us trying to talk to them.
Dick's been fighting the battle.
Well, wouldn't you think, Dick, it's better to not vote on something, otherwise just let it go? I'd, I'd withdraw my motion, and just not, I'd rather see us not do anything than vote this down. Just not do anything until they make us do, right?
Well, you need to give the Ethics Commission or somebody a direction. We can't just say we're gonna sit here and not do anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you don't vote, I'd rather see us withdraw this and vote it down, though.
Well, I think you could table it.
Yeah.
But you do have a third option.
Yeah, we could always just table it and let it sit there.
Okay.
Doc O'Brien had something.
I can't, I'd make sure.
So I would strongly urge you guys not to pass with the intention of not enforcing any ordinance.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think that could be turned around on you.
It's ridiculous.
I, I don't know what the mayor's involvement or the Ethics Commission's involved. Who's the enforcer of the rule? Is it the mayor that comes?
The Ethics Commission.
But doesn't the mayor have to get, release information at the front desk to people or deny them?
No, you could walk right into town hall and say, I want information on.
I'm not sure. I prefer to time, we're making legal interpretations.
The Ethics Commission is.
There's a separate statute called Public Information Act.
The Ethics Commission is the repository of that information, is responsible for following the law, whatever that is. Right now, you walk at the door, you get it.
So I, I wouldn't have, the mayor couldn't come up and say, no.
The mayor cannot deny it.
Okay, so that keeps you out of liability. That would be a concern.
He keeps him out of liability. Well, thank you. Sometimes.
No, but I, I'm also concerned about the, why pass something that someone could leverage you with in the future?
Oh, you're right, Doc. You're right.
And the, the next question I have, when they talk about disclosure, I mean, can you just tell them, I've got IBM fidelity magellum? This, without dictating how much of either?
Oh, no.
This wants, this wants everything. If you have one share, they want to know.
Anyway, my, I would encourage you not to pass anything that you would not enforce.
Right. Ten dollars.
I filled it, that's, that's why we've not been, yeah, that's why we've not passed this for a long time now.
So, yes, we've been talking about things, and I apologize stepping over the lawyer. I will let him chime in with regards to the audience's questions on requests for public information, the way this stands right now, the liabilities that we have, et cetera, as the mayor said.
Well, first of all, in, in terms of records being public or information being made public, you have not only this ordinance which follows state law requiring it to be public, you also have a separate statute called the Public Information Act that, you know, makes or presumes certain information as public, or certain documents at least containing information. So I don't think it's just a matter of, you know, changing our ordinance, because now you not only run afoul of what the state's requiring for this ordinance to be, but you also have the separate problem that you have a Public Information Act at the state level that would probably require most, if not all, of this information to be made public pursuant to that act, so.
Yeah, so even if we fixed it here, it needs to be fixed there. I, you're right.
I, I think the only way to fix the public disclosure aspect is the state legislature would have to specifically address that as part of a revision of the law, because I, I think we would, tell me if I'm wrong, be going way too far in misapplying the law if we were to redact or not allow a citizen to look at that.
I agree, and, and remember that they could challenge the town's withholding of that information, and there are penalties under the Public Information Act that can be imposed on those who wrongfully withhold information.
So that sides in legislative issue.
Yes, from the state.
It's from the state.
And Jason?
Go ahead.
Bob?
I, I would, Ken and Scott and, and everybody at this table, I will never cast a vote for this legislation unless there are substantial changes. I, I won't do it.
Well, I'll make, can I make a motion that we table it?
And, and so.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
Can I have one last?
No, sure.
Is there, is there any opportunity, when we, when we table it and pass it on, are we gonna be assessed penalties or fees or anything like that?
We can be.
No.
No, the, 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 the power of the State Ethics Commission is to simply go to court and essentially seek a court order ordering us to adopt the model code or imposing on us.
But then there are four other, four others that are in the same suit.
Exactly, so they've shown no willingness, in fact, have come pretty close to indicating they're not gonna take that step. So the step is the shaming of, you know.
Yeah, the bad boy list.
We're, we're on their list.
I'm sure not a lot of people are checking our website.
To the Gaithersburg council as well as Westminster was that if, if you. as Westminster, was that if, if you came to appoint any of our municipalities, that we were to write a letter and basically say, we're rejecting this and here's why, that it probably, the letter, my suggestion would be, should include a statement that asks the state ethics, in fairness then, to place on their bad boy list a link to this letter, which would be, in effect, a rebuttal and would be every bit as public as the, the shame list, you know, naughty list. And, you know, that was my suggestion that, that, and, and I, so, you know, for what it's worth.
I just wanted to make sure before we, if we keep on pushing.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question.
I didn't want the town to ensue fees and penalties and other.
I'm waiting. No, I want you to finish.
I'm all done.
Okay. So, because the motion was on before, can we have a vote on it?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Tom, you weighed in.
I, I will give one, one minor piece of discussion. Even if our ethics commission needed all of this data in order to do their job, it does not need to be public data. Okay? So, so that's why this is an overreaching statute. It does something that's way beyond what's necessary for the job to be done.
So, there's really two issues, the required data and the fact that it can.
The amount and the publ-ness of it.
The publ-ness of it.
It's can table.
All right, we're gonna motion to table. Any discussions, Scott?
No.
All right, all in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I saw everybody there, Debbie.
Usually, when you table something, you table it till, till a specific act or a specific time. Do you wanna do that?
Somebody'll have to reint-, somebody'll have to just reintroduce it, 'cause it's, it's introduction will lapse automatically in about fifteen day, well, actually, in probably just about.
Very soon.
Very momentarily.
Right.
'Cause we're, 'cause we're running a week late this month, so.
It already expired, okay.
I don't think it quite has, but I checked that. When Ken was.
Tomorrow.
To be honest with you, when Ken missed, and I said I was gonna stall it for another month, I did go calculate the days to see if I could push it off another few months by having it, by, by, by having it procedure expire, and I discovered it would.
I thought for some reason, just I one year.
See, those are the discussions that go on, like, you know, between Debbie and I, when we're, you know, in her office, and I'm like, what's our timing, Debbie? Can we throw this off and get rid of it? You know, those are, those are the discussions that take place.
Oh, I wanna, I wanna say thank you, because I, I just don't think we can pass something like this that has so many holes in it.
Well, and I also wanna say thank you, Dick, for your perseverance in trying to do this. We, we understand you've been trying to get the process going on, but.
Since two thousand and ten.
There's only so much you can do until others step in to do what they're supposed to do.
Mr. Burke?
A couple months ago, my regulation was that a state delegate.
Abzali? I think it was Kathy Abzali.
Abzali.
And we sort of caught off guard, so, with this topic, with concerns, and my regulation was that you said she was gonna go back down to Indianapolis and get things changed. I know Indianapolis hasn't, you know, section hasn't been in since April, but have you heard from her?
Dick has, Dick has.
There were a couple of email exchanges between her and I, and basically, she wanted information, details in terms of the, the law, the, what our financial disclosure statement looked like, center of the state, also pro forma and stuff. And I have not heard back as to the status of that, and I do believe, like you surmise, it has to do with when the legislature is in session.
The state bill has already failed. We already.
You suspect that you will follow the verb, or do you suspect that she will then come back to you?
Um, you know, that just reminds me, maybe we should just copy our delegates and senators, right?
Maybe we should do it.
With that letter.
Yeah, and well, we talked to, um, our, our, our new state senator, uh, his name slipped in my mind.
Ho. Michael Ho. Michael Huff or?
Huff, Michael Huff, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, it was, forgive me for losing, it's Michael Huff. Michael Huff, yeah. We talked to him about it as well when he was here.
Mayor Huff.
Anything else on this one? All right, let's move on. We've got resolution two thousand fifteen three, which is tied directly to ordinance two thousand fifteen ten. So, why don't we deal with these together, unless there's some reason we shouldn't. Before we go into discussion, I, I would, to get us to discussion, I will move we adopt two thousand fifteen three and two thousand fifteen ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott's seconding, okay, let's go into discussion on these. This is basically just to bring us into compliance with Carroll County's flood plain management, just kind of a paper shuffle, one thing.
Yeah, and I think basically what I read is that it's just establishing levels of responsibility, which is outside of the town, if the county will step up, so.
Dick, I think it goes a little bit further than that, just has to do with the quote-unquote rain tax and, and the fact that we have, here comes.
Here comes Dick's once in chair of the water and sewer commission.
Can we make him change his jacket every time?
You gotta change your outfit with each.
A different hat.
We need to get hats to his water, hats to his ethics, hats to his elections.
This is actually a.
Bill and Larry.
This is M D E imposing a mandate from the federal government, and the federal government has decided that there should no longer be allowed flood plains, and this just has to do with taking it out of the laws at all levels of government, basically.
I, I had, I had two quick questions, which maybe either of you can answer on this. Since Carroll County is taking over everything, is this the Carroll County side of town only, or are they taking over both sides?
No, it's, it's the entire town. This is just what.
That's, that was, that was my thought. Then my second question was, under the penalties, it says, any person who fails to comply with any or all of the requirements or provisions within the flood plain management shall be subject to the penalties as outlined within the chapter of the Carroll County Code. Can we hold somebody on the Frederick County side of town responsible for something in the, for a penalty that would be imposed in the Carroll County Code? Just wanna make sure we can do that.
Yes, basically, you're adopting.
We're adopting the Carroll County Code by, by, right, by putting.
And just for clarification, I think what this does is, is that if you're in a flood plain zone, this, a compliant ordinance and resolution allows those who have property within those zones to qualify for the federal insurance program through, offered through FEMA for, I believe, lower premiums. I'm oversimplifying.
Yeah.
So, what we did, if you'll recall, is, is that we used to have an ordinance that adopted, did exactly this, but then the maps for Carroll County got out of date. And so FEMA, in order to continue to allow our properties within those flood plain zones to continue to qualify for the insurance program, demanded that we adopt our very own ordinance, because they're, the counties that we had adopted incorporated was out of date. So, we did that with a full understanding, about two years ago, with a full understanding that when Carroll County got up to date, we'd essentially rescind our full-blown ordinance and simply go back to what we were doing previously. And that's what this ordinance does. It simply turns the clock back now that Carroll County is up to date with its maps.
Yeah, and, and the other side is, we're the top of the hill. We have very, very little flood plain.
There's literally only like seven areas of flood. I mean, there's only seven residences right now that are, you know, anywhere close to the flood plain, and it's mostly in Carroll County.
It's all by CSX.
This is in no way related or could be tied to maybe runaround on the former rain tax.
No, it doesn't have.
Has nothing to do with the rain tax.
That, nothing. We, at, when that was going on, Frederick County, I don't, you know, tier one and tier two, or, I keep calling it tier one, but that's not what they all.
Phase one, phase two.
Phase one, phase two.
Permits and everything, so, you know, the Frederick County side was actually being taken into the Carroll County side, but Frederick County was gonna have to pay for it, Carroll County was already being paid for, you know.
The other side of this is that, in, in terms of managing flood plains, it, under these stormwater management permits is the way that's addressed, which is really the expenditure side of that equation. The rain tax was the revenue side of that equation, so they're, they're.
But they're not laying the ground.
They're not, no, they're not, they're not linked at all.
On a federal level?
No.
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 Or they haven't told us yet.
Any other, any other questions or discussion on this one?
No.
All right, all in favor of accepting resolution two thousand fifteen dash three and ordinance two thousand fifteen dash ten, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was everybody, Debbie. All right, ordinance two thousand fifteen thirteen, this is the increasing our budget retroactively to cover additional legal fees. I will move we accept ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen. I have a second. Bob's had a second?
Yes.
Bob's seconding.
And now Bob has a question. Is this last year money or this year money?
Last year.
Okay, so all of these, all of these are for last year money, correct?
No, you're, the first two will be for last year.
Okay.
And basically, just.
I did scratch out one.
One of them. I, I went over each and every one of these ordinances with staff, and basically, and it's called a budget amendment, it's really a budget alignment, we just went through an audit.
Right.
We had money in other categories, but Roberta, our accounting, wanted to see them in certain categories, so we're just really realigning the budget. We never exceeded.
And that was my question. We were, we were way under budget.
We were under budget, we were under in category, but just not on light item, and we were, we had different light items, and Roberta just wanted us to realign it. So, this is, it says budget amendment, it's a budget realignment.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Yeah.
And that's for basically all of it.
Yeah, although this one is also, this particular, this first one actually is, is a substantial increase.
Right.
Because we had far greater legal fees than we originally bu-, budgeted.
We had litigate, one piece in particular.
Yeah, but we actually have two fairly sizable litigations going on this year. Any more discussion?
No.
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody? Okay.
Mr. Huff, was that passed as an emergency?
Yes, it is passed as an emergency.
Well, actually, I guess we would need to, we oughta move that one.
You didn't say it was an emergency.
Didn't say that on here, so.
Yeah, down, very bottom.
It did.
Well, it does on the agenda.
It's being introduced.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it's.
Are hereby suspended, and this measure's being declared an emergency measure.
I will move that we accept two thousand fifteen dash thirteen as an emergency ordinance.
Second.
Second from Scott.
I'll second it.
Okay, Bob's seconding it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Done.
Just in case there's any questions.
Thank you, Charlene.
All right, two thousand fifteen fourteen has been pulled. Two thousand fifteen fifteen, we have a revised one.
It's revised because the amount has been reduced.
I wanna make sure I'm looking at the revised copy, which is the.
I'd like the sticker on it.
The other sticker on it.
Yeah, but I pulled a sticky off of one, so I'm gonna assume it was this one.
Is it for thirty-five thousand two hundred?
Yeah, thirty-five.
Yeah, thirty-five two hundred.
Okay.
It's at the bottom, okay. Okay, so I've got the newer one here.
Sixty-two seven is no good.
Yeah, see, I pulled the sticky off. And that, that I, 'cause I, I tried to update my packet, and that, and I pulled the sticky off.
Again, we were challenging some of these fees, they didn't come in on time, 'cause we were, we were challenging them, basically, and they came in late.
All right, I.
Barney, what's the address?
Yes, the DPW.
Would you, would you, Doc?
Department of Public Works.
You need to come up to the podium as well, if you're.
The main yard renovations.
It's, it's just not an open discussion, if you need to speak, come to the podium.
It's for general government building renovations.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it was the stairwell where Monica, we didn't want her slipping and falling.
Yeah, Monica tumbled down the stairway in the back, so we decided to put handrails back.
We didn't want anybody else falling.
They want me to break my neck, that's all it really was.
We're also asking that this be passed as an emergency measure.
Okay, well, I will move that we accept, that we pass ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen as an emergency measure. Scott, is that a second? Okay, so we can, I guess to formally.
And is this for the same reason, just basically realignment?
That's what they said for these two. This is an old one, two thousand fourteen dash nine.
Well, this was actually. There are several things in this category, if you wanna break down. One of them was the railing, uh, one of them was, we were contesting some fees, they, until later, we weren't gonna pay them, so we held off.
Right.
Although they were from a previous year.
Some of this is money that we, we should've paid this year, and we're just pulling into this year, 'cause we didn't get it paid, and.
We didn't pay it last year.
We didn't get it paid before July first.
Right.
Okay. It's a budget alignment.
I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm the hawk on these emergency measures.
Stay there, babe, stay there. Be the hawk.
Any, any other discussion on this one?
Just a question, maybe Brian can answer. Is the wash bay all done now?
Yes.
It's all complete, the wash bay all complete?
Wash bay's done?
Yep. It's operational.
Cool. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What's your unanimous? All right, two thousand fifteen dash sixteen.
Now, these are current year.
Is this in another emergency, does this need to?
We're, we're asking this would be.
'Cause you wanna close out the books?
That's 'cause you wanna close the books.
The work has already been done.
Oh, so we need to pay this?
For this particular.
And again, I think we originally wanted to do, this could fall under paving or parks, and Roberta wanted it switched to the other category, so it's a budget realignment.
All right, I will move we accept two thousand fifteen dash sixteen.
Parks.
As an emergency ordinance. All in favor, say, I, I actually, second.
Who wants it?
Jason, he's parked, man.
Yeah, Jason, this is you. You wanna second this one, Jason?
Give me a second, hold on.
All right. Well, I'm not asking you to vote for it, just second it so we can discuss it. He's seconding it. I, I introduce a lot of things I don't vote for, but just to get us to, able to discuss them.
Except for one particular thing I remember.
Yeah, basically, as I recall, we, we were gonna pay this in last year's budget, but we didn't get it paved in time, and the bill didn't come in until this year, so we're just taking the money from last year's budget, moving it to this year's budget, so we can actually pay for it.
But we actually had the money in the budget under, was it parks or paving, and we had to switch it?
Parks.
It's under parks, yeah. Then we, Roberta wanted it realigned.
Yeah, it couldn't get scheduled to be done till August.
Yeah, the problem is, they just couldn't do it before, before the last fiscal year ran out.
And plus the realigning of the category.
This is really just a, a rollover. All right. Yeah, every now and then it happens, if something doesn't, you know.
Well, she's kinda like stricter on her books as well.
Yeah, we, we budgeted June thirtieth, you know, July, you know, July first to June, June thirtieth, and not everything necessarily gets done within that year that we planned. And if we call somebody and say, get this done, oh, and they don't show up till the beginning of July to do it, we still gotta pay them. But we didn't have it in this year's budget. Any other discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Two thousand fifteen seventeen, this is the Department of Public Works offices in the break room. Scott?
So, one point of clarification, reading it, it says that they want to declare it So, one point of clarification, reading it, it says that they want to declare it as an emergency measure, but it doesn't say that on the agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Says in the bottom.
We'll go with what's in the ordinance.
Oh, you mean on two thousand fifteen seventeen at the bottom?
But on the agenda, it doesn't say that it's an emergency.
Yes, it doesn't.
It doesn't even call it a budget amendment.
This was something that was, um, I think this was, I had a question about that, and that's why I didn't put it on there, but it's in the ordinance, it needs, you know, I think she wanted to go ahead and get this adopted tonight.
Charlene, pardon?
I cannot hear, it's all going up-
So, this, on the bottom says it's an, up for emergency adoption.
It's an option, and that's because there's nothing that's been spent this year for that, however, work cannot continue until anything's approved, so it's your option at this point.
Okay, so the question I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna pull a Bob King card, is that unless it's a true emergency, then we should intro it-
As a regular.
And then discuss it and do it the next meeting. So, if you can give me a reason why it's an emergency, we can discuss that as a council, otherwise we're gonna-
No.
Let Barney, let Barney address it.
I think this one could be non-emergency.
All right.
So, can we just introduce it?
I will, I will introduce this, do I have a second on the introduction?
I'll second it.
Scott's introducing it, it's on next month's, but, I mean, it's on next month's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One man can't make a difference.
Bob King.
All right, ordinance two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, um, this is the, um, well, the, this is the, um, medical marijuana bill, basically, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, kind of, this, um-
I didn't get that one.
This really, the focus really was, uh, the, kinda the other stuff, the, the alcohol, firearms, tobacco.
Right.
But-
You just added that in because medical marijuana is coming up.
Was coming up in discussions, so.
Coming up, so we figured we should cover it all.
I got a really good question.
All right, well, we're actually just sending it to planning.
Okay, but before we send it to planning-
So, we're dodging it.
Because I would hate it to go to planning, cause I know I would have a problem with this, can somebody tell me how you grow alcohol or firearms?
We grow corn, and then you turn it into alcohol.
Well, it says in the war. Says processing, manufacturing, and war.
I understand, I just saw ord growing.
Yeah.
Well, so it's going to planning.
I got a shotgun tree in my backyard, you didn't know that?
Potatoes, and you know, that's, they make alcohol out of them.
I fire potatoes out of my potato cannon, does that count?
So, see, you're, you-
There's an ordinance for that.
That's everything, you got it all wrapped into one, Peter.
Enforceable.
I go out to Ken Braden's forum, shoot those potato cannons off. Okay, so this is only here to go to planning, so I guess somebody, do we, I guess we technically introduce it to go to planning?
Mr. Planning?
Do we need a, we need-
Yeah, we usually do.
Okay, I will, I will intro- I would, I introduce it, Bob, is that a second on the introduction?
Yes, sir, that was a second.
Okay, so this is going to- Ordinance two thousand fifteen, uh, we've pu- have we pulled eighteen, did we pull eighteen?
No, that was in your other packet.
That was, okay, I'm crossing off one off here, sorry everybody.
No, we just knew eighteen were on.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm crossing off wrong. All right, nineteen, this is another one that's going to planning, um, changes the downtown zone, reference micro distilleries, breweries, wineries, and costly, coffee roasting operations, Bob, do you wanna introduce this?
I'll introduce or second, whichever is most appropriate.
Well, it's, it's going to plan, okay, I got introduction from Bob and a second from Scott, and we shift this one off-
It's a micro brewer.
And we shift this one off to planning. Well, actually, you know-
We have sixty days on both of them.
There was, there, there was a Mount Airy Brewing Company that opened up the firehouse about twenty years ago.
Right, it absolutely was.
So, it has, it has been done, and-
Mount Airy.
We may have a school that's open.
In fact, they had windows downstairs, and all the, all the big racks were downstairs.
Yeah, the stuff was in the basement, and that's, uh, the, um-
Even better.
The up, the upper deck is in their old, um, pub facility.
There we go.
Yeah, so I can remember when we had the, the Mount Airy Brewing Company, and they were just before their time.
Nice.
Do they have a cell in there?
Yeah.
Actually, I don't think they ever actually completed brewing on site, they had Frederick Brewing Company doing it for a while.
They had the, they were putting the equipment in there.
They were putting it in, yeah.
They had three, three or four huge factories, it was all glass.
Yeah, they had, they were putting in equipment. Okay, um-
You're on Jason.
Or unfinished business.
Yeah, unfinished business. What do we have for unfinished business? Approval of the new park field rates, Jason, that's yours.
All right, so, uh, in your packets, Councilman, and Mayor, you should see a memorandum, uh, for the approval of park field and court reservation rates for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen tier system. Uh, the Board of Parks and Recs, with the support of the town staff, are seeking council approval for the park and field court, uh, reservation rates for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. You can see the, uh, pavilion and gazebo reservation rates currently. And on page two are the proposed park, field, and court reservation rates, along with the tor- uh, tier system that the, uh, Parks and Recs Board- Have developed.
We currently don't charge for somebody who wants to rent a baseball field. So, if you come in, let's say, and you take the pavilion, um, the fields don't go with it. Um, so what we wanna do is come up with a system so that people can actually reserve a field or a basketball court, or something like that, and, you know, be able to reserve it if it's not being used by mayor, for county, or already on our schedule list. We actually had, a couple years ago, there was, there was a profit entity, Melissa was telling me about it, that came in to use the basketball courts, and we randomly came up with some charge for them, but we didn't have it, cause there were a profit entity that wanted to take up the basketball courts for a period of time. So, so basically, we just came up with a, a fee structure, so that people can actually-
This is a more simplified, um, and then it also comes up with our tier system, so we can, um, allow those in ranking, uh, right of, right of refusal.
Yeah. It, I think it's, I think it's something that's needed.
I, I have, I just have reservations about charging our residents who have already paid to have these fields built.
Well, it would only be if they wanna reserve it, if it's open and they just wanna go use it.
We're not, are we voting on this tonight?
Yeah, it's a-
Or we just-
No, this is just discussion, this wasn't a, right?
This is up for-
Is, is it in the form of an ordinance, is that what we're doing?
It's not in the form of an ordinance, but we, I guess, have to, well, Parks and Rec has some independent authority.
Yes, they do.
So.
And I think this actually falls with-
Is this here for us to see it, or do we have to approve these?
I, I think this actually falls within the purview of Parks and Recs.
Melissa has them here, um, staff recommends town council approval of the park field and court reservation rates.
Right, but, but I'm not sure if we necessarily need to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you do. Um, and I, I believe there was a, an, an issue with, when Frank Johnson was mayor, and I don't remember exactly what it was.
Skate park fees.
That was skate park fees. And it was-
Yeah.
So, the only, one question I'm gonna ask Tom is that if we do put a fee for use in place right now for this, is this subject that we can come back and reevaluate it at any time?
Sure.
Separate of, like, how we do the water rates, you can only do it in a certain frequency or period, who is responsible for enforcing these rates, since the Parks Department is not, or, I'm sorry-
Board.
The Parks Board is not their own department, is it code enforcement, is it town staff's responsibility now to collect fees for this, who's monitoring?
Town staff has been doing it.
Who's monitoring the fields to ensure that the right people are, i- it's just the logistics.
The Parks guys go out and post the fields currently, I know I've reserved-
Currently, when, um, if someone is using the field, and, um, an organized, uh, sports group wants to come and use that field, because they revert, reserved it through the board, they have been issued their permit, there are signs on all the fields, all the pavilions that say, uh, you know, you know, for, for permit use only. If no one is using that, uh, there's no structure saying, you know, you need to be removed, you can use the field, but when this or, other organization comes, comes onto that field, and they have the permit to, to use it, then, um, those other members that are using that field will, will need to leave, if they, if they are not leaving, they, they can call the town.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, of course, call law enforcement, cause then, you know.
Right, cause there's a permit violation, okay.
I can, I can think of many-
But it's also the board that is gonna be holding this up.
I can think of many scenarios where an outside organization notices that a field is not being used regularly on Saturdays, so they go to use it on Saturdays, and they're an outside organization, they don't ask anybody, they just-
Start using it.
Kind of sneak on and do it. Along comes John Smith, who lives up the street, who's a resident of town, now you have, you have a group, that's an organized group on the field, and John Smith, the resident, that can't go on there and, you know, pitch to his son, because somebody from outside the town is using the field.
But if he's reserved it.
If John Smith's reserved it?
But it, but, or, or if he, if he's there first, and they haven't reserved it, then it's his.
Well, no, he's not there first, they're there first. And they're not residents of the town, and he is.
Yeah, but we can't, I guess we can't really get into the business of policing-
That's gonna happen with this or without that.
I'm just trying to, it's just a monkey punch I'm trying to throw into the-
Unless there's a permit.
Yeah, unless there's a permit, it's first come, first served.
I mean, you can't reserve Watkins Park and say nobody can go running around Watkins Park.
But-
Bob is very strong on-
What I'm, what I'm saying-
Oh, I understand.
What I'm saying is you're denying, you're allowing an outside entity to use our field.
Oh, I don't agree with them, I'm just saying, I don't agree with it at all.
Pat's thinking, how does he come up with this stuff?
I'm just telling you what he's doing.
But, you know, there, there, there are many scenarios where a, a town citizen would not be able to use a field that they pay for, and other people from outside the town could be on that field and not really belong there. But you can't chase them off.
Well, Bob, here's, 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 but here's-
But you can't chase them off.
But here's what we've done, I mean, for years, for example, with the pavilions.
Right.
Some group could be in there, using the pavilion, having a barbecue, they could all be people from Damascus.
Right.
Okay, nobody lives in Mount Airy, well, if they're in there, using the pavilion, unless somebody has the pavilion reserved and has paid for it, somebody who lives down the street can walk to the pavilion, but they can't use the pavilion, cause somebody else is already occupying it. Now, I've actually had to run people out of the pavilion when I've reserved it.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's a sign there, and I have to go up there and say, hey, look, I got the pavilion reserved, there's my name.
I think a baseball field is a little bit different than that pavilion, okay, because a baseball field is, this guy could, uh, with, with that other team, if, if they weren't there, he could pitch to his son, or, you know-
He could.
Play catch with his son.
And if, if nobody's in the pavilion, he could go in the pavilion and light up the barbecue.
He could sit in the pavilion all by himself.
He, he could fire up the barbecue.
Okay, I, I understand.
It's the same, same thing.
Okay. Okay, I've, I've just, I've had my say.
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's great you're coming up with some type of structure to start with, and be happy to see how it works.
Thank you.
I would just ask for clarification, see if the actual board sets the fees, or town council sets the fees.
That would be for Tom, probably.
Yeah. As I recall, the way that shook out on the skate, uh, the exhaustive debate on the skateboard, and I came in the middle of that, was that, I, I think that my predecessor opined that the town council certainly could set the fee, has the power to do that, through ordinance or perhaps resolution. But in the absence of the town council speaking to it, the mayor then had the authority to set, in that case, skate park fees, I believe that's the way that came out.
Yeah, cause there's nothing here that says that Parks and Rec sets fees.
Years now.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll leave this up to the mayor.
Fees.
You can just say yes.
There you go, Pat.
What I would do is, I would leave it in the-
There was about three meetings that it took us to come up with, one, the tier system, and then we, we based a lot of the fees and narrowed it down, um, from Frederick County and also Carroll County, uh, Parks and Recs, uh, fee structure, and then reduced those based on what other counties have come up with, so.
Yeah, do I hear any objection from the council?
Not from me, I think it's a good idea.
Uh, from, you will from me, I, I do not think we can charge our residents-
Can I sign this at any time, I would like to sit down with Councilman King, hear him out before we sign this?
My objection is-
You can make the change when you want, you don't have to make it here at the table.
You can change it anytime you want.
I have to tell you, I'm probably gonna approve it, cause I don't agree with Councilman King on a lot of issues, I'm just gonna shout people, but I would like to hear him out.
You can change it every, every other day, just to confuse people.
No, don't wanna do that, I'd like to sit down and hear your objections, and then, and then we'll sign.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, Nick.
What does a date to submit request mean, because it says here, for example, uh, resident town of Mount Airy, the fee is, is ten dollars, and the date to submit request is January first, so I think there should be clarification of whatever that means.
I think there's a timeframe for different, for different members of the tier group, um, the town of Mount Airy has to have their act together by January the first, and all of their, all of their items, um, the appreciation dinner, um-
By September, we, yeah.
Well, that's, that's-
And that's all gotta be on the schedule.
It's a good, it's a good question, and Pat will sort that out.
I'm just saying, June, I suddenly decide I need-
What was your concern, Dick?
Uh, what does date to submit request mean, because there's probably two for six categories?
What dates is that on the date?
Two.
Uh, two. With January first.
So, you want clarification on the date to submit?
What, yeah, so I understand that.
Do you want me to give you that, or no? I can, I can just explain it. So, essentially, the, the top two groups, the, the town of Mount Airy, so any, um, any organization associated with the, with the town of Mount Airy, and then also those, um, non, non-profit sports organizations in good standing, um, the, the town needs to have all of its dates onto the calendar first. And so what, what that alleviates is, um, us kicking other people off of that calendar, where we have already set out all of our dates, then those groups coming in to re- make reservations know where those town events are, or where those sports organizations are, and then that just alleviates us saying, well, we can't do that, we have another event on that day.
Uh, I, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I think what you're saying is, for the, say, the town resident, January first, you're saying, I guess cal- for calendar year, uh, request should be submitted, uh, January first or thereafter, is that, is that what?
Yeah, it should really be thereafter.
All right.
You're right, I think you're right, Dick, I think what they mean is, you know.
Well, two and three are the same.
It was just the beginning date.
Two and three, we don't need to pick this apart, I just wanna grab a little bit to do, hey, Jason, but two and three look the same to me.
Uh, one is sports, one is non-sports. So, those are-
Uh, profit general.
Teams and teams, and not teams.
Sports, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
Church organizations, or what have you.
I know you put a lot of work into it, I, if there's a concern for anybody, I wanna hear that out first.
Okay.
So, we'll let the mayor and Bob and Parks work that one out.
So, is the, when Melissa asked me tomorrow, I should just-
Melissa's sitting right there, she's not gonna ask it.
Oh, my goodness.
Was it correct?
So, it's a-
Just say, okay.
It's your, the council, it doesn't have to vote that they are-
No, we're, we're not taking any, anything on it, it's the mayor's gonna make that determination, he can choose those fees.
We had discussion. We had discussion.
Okay, on to number two, medical marijuana discussion, Tom, anything we need to really discuss as far as this is concerned?
I think that mainly, it, it, it's becoming an issue, uh, very quickly, I, I've heard of other municipalities already receiving requests, uh, for dispensaries, and I think we may have even received an inquiry very soon after this hit the agenda. So, um, I think that Monica and Heather are looking forward and saying we probably ought to address it, cause our code really doesn't, one way or the other, and the question then is, is what direction does the council want us to go, I don't know what to draft.
I always assumed they would just do it at pharmacies.
I don't think so.
I think that's a, that's another, I think that's a whole nother location, not that, I don't have any experience, but.
And, and I don't, I don't know either, but I would, I, I know in other states that it's handled completely severely.
Bob, medical head shop down the street, I don't think-
You bring in the doctors for them.
I just happen to know-
Here, here comes somebody with at least some, some medical background.
So, not only dispensaries, but growing it, if you're gonna tackle one issue, you're gonna tackle both of them.
That's right.
Right.
That's right, and, and the Maryland regulations that were just passed relative to this, seek to regulate the growing, the processing, the dispensing.
Yeah, the growing is very heavily regulated, carefully regulated, it's not like you can grow it out in your yard, it's grown in a locked facility, you know, it's very-
Greenhouse.
Yeah.
So, getting locked up.
So, by way of example, Heather, in discussion-
Well, what, I have a white house, I can't grow, I can't grow in my house.
Yeah, we got it right, I got it, we had a cop in our packet. Tom just stole mine.
Is that what this is?
That's okay, you can borrow it. That, yeah, that's, that's what the Maryland regulations are for.
You can't hold much of that.
So, I think by way of example, Heather brought up with me-
We're losing track of the meeting.
I was gonna say, I don't know what's going on, who's talking here?
Let's look, Tom's got the floor.
Um, by way of example, I think Heather brought up with me, and I'll raise this because she's not here, friends, do you wanna put a limitation that says this is, can only occur, cannot occur within X, you know, foot radius or mile radius of schools? Do you wanna restrict it to certain zone, uh, zoning districts? Those are the kind of things that I think probably Monica and Heather were coming to me initially for, and on which I prob- we all probably need some guidance, so I know what to draft.
State regulations.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna handle that down the line now?
I'm kinda wondering if maybe, I, I, if maybe, you know, since a lot of this is really zoning, maybe planning ought to give us a recommendation on that.
But, just, just out of curiosity-
Cause, cause it's gonna go in zoning, that's really where it's gonna go.
That's right.
Right, but since our planning coordinator is asking for advice and guidance.
I think, uh, Barbara Cane just passed something in.
Then send it to planning.
Yeah.
It's in your lap.
Wow, man.
We're, we're gonna leave it to the experienced individuals to think. Okay. All right. Okay, Brian, we've got our tractor purchase here. Got three options, we had a budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, the one that Brian is preferring is a John Deere, which comes in a little over that, um, and you're actually gonna trade in some equipment, which is gonna knock it down to actually below the amount that we need, I mean, I guess the question is, do we need to reconsider it, cause the actual dollars are below?
I would, I, I asked him to bring it for council, even though it's now below the amount that actually-
Okay. It's below that, cause we're giving him stuff back.
We're giving stuff back, which is also new for the town, and I asked Brian, these are fair wages for trade-ins, we, we've had some issues with some of the, uh, selling off of equipment, and the prime field seems are good, uh, fair wages, it's a good way to go, but it's still over the amount, so council should-
Right, but ultimately, when we trade the equipment back, we're spending less than we budgeted, right?
True, correct.
Right.
True, but it's still.
Well, it's like a trade-in with a car. We're trading in some old stuff and they're giving us a, a discount, which takes it to below our budgeted amount.
This is why you got.
It's safe, you, you, the mayor's take, the mayor's taking the safer course. Uh, I will move that we, um, accept the John Deere bid, um, at forty-one eight less the, uh, the trade-ins. Got a second from Ken, any discussion, guys? Bob, Jason, any discussion on this one?
I, I'm not real sure what we're buying. We're buying the John Deere thirty, three oh three nine R.
Correct, for forty-one eight.
Forty-one thousand, but deduct twenty-four thousand ultimately.
Well, oh, so these are just prices for the Kubota, Kubota didn't have enough horsepower.
Those, those, right, those are the other bids for the other piece of equipment.
So we're actually buying the highest priced piece of equipment instead of the lowest like we normally do, and it's because of horsepower. Okay.
Correct. Well, he wants that, he thinks that's the better tractor, not all, like, we'll say all not tractors are not all the same.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and we're, and so we're trading in this other stuff at the time for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Right, which, which take, knocks the price down.
Okay, what kinda, what kinda tractor? Uh, is it a Bowler? Brian?
Yeah, no, we're going with the fully enclosed cabin because I need, right now I only have one enclosed cabin, enclosed tractor for snowblowing. And we're taking on more and more snowblowing duties, so now I add a tractor. Plus it will have a belly meller, plus it will still handle all of our attachments that we have at the shop, so it's performing a lot of good functions.
I just didn't, I didn't know.
I now understand, I was not understanding when I was looking.
You need to understand, sir, thank you for asking.
Yeah, we're buying the forty-one thousand dollar tractor, but we're basically trading in twenty-four thousand dollars worth of, an old car.
Absolutely.
Cool.
So did we need a second?
No, I, I got a second from Ken. We're just, uh, on discussion. Any more discussion?
I'm done.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Keep it, we need this one too. That was next.
Yes. Okay.
We've got the, um, yeah, well, I'm showing the, the basketball court, right.
So it's thirty-six, but we got a grant for twenty-four, so this is really the amount that you're gonna pay.
Yeah, we got the, right. Right, up next is the basketball court, it's on that same sheet of paper. Uh, I will move that we go ahead with the mid-Atlantic tennis courts bid at thirty-six, four thirty-nine, eighty. Um, as you'll see, we budgeted twenty-eight for that, but we actually got a grant for twenty-four, so it's gonna cost us a lot less.
Who wrote that, who wrote that?
It's gonna cost us twelve.
That's the POS grant, right?
Okay, yeah, and I just, who wrote the grant?
It's twenty-seven.
Okay, Melissa wrote that grant. Melissa, thank you, good job.
Good job, Melissa.
Good job.
That's twenty-four thousand dollars of taxpayer money, you said.
Thank you.
Good job.
So I will.
And that is a, that, that was a Frederick County project open space.
Yeah.
Move we accept that bid, I have a second?
Second.
I saw a lot of hands up, pick, take a picture.
Take, take Jason.
Jason's good, it's Parks, so Jason, take that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I think I got everybody there. Uh, we covered board of ed. We've got a supplemental letter of agreement for salt here. This, is this the same one we get every year?
It is, the only difference is the price has gone from fifty-six to.
Sixty-five, six per ton.
Yeah.
Brian?
I can tell you right now that paper is nice, but we've been cut off last year, for the past two years, we have never gotten a look from it.
Okay, well, that's, I do remember where they, they cut it, they were running short and they basically said, we won't give you any.
That's the whole.
Which is why we built a huge salt bin a few years ago.
The past two years, last year, they actually, the county called me to ask us if we had any spare salt from them. We were down to less than six tons of salt.
Ten thousand dollars an ounce.
Now, that's the miracle metal, medical marijuana bin.
We'll trade some salt for keeping the students in, from Sterling Glen in town.
There you go.
So are we, does that mean we get to salt ordinance and planning also?
So basically with Brian, basically with this, basically, I, I remember from my, my long tenure on Streets and Roads. What this basically does is, when we run out of salt, in theory, we're supposed to be able to go to the state and get salt from them at sixty-five oh six per ton. But as Brian's telling us, the last two years, they've run short of salt, so they've not been able to give us any anyways, but.
But you still wanna have that piece of paper.
You still kinda wanna be there, if they happen to have salt and we happen to not, we can at least know we can get it.
Right.
How much do we pay for salt?
Sixty-three a ton.
Deliver.
Yeah, but that's right now, right? I mean, when there's a salt shortage in the winter, we're prob.
That's a locked price for a year.
Okay, we, alright.
As long as they got it.
As long as they got it.
Correct.
So that's why we have a dump.
It's a locked price.
Okay, yeah, as long as they.
Are we stocked?
Last year I had standing order of salt on February second or fourth. I did not start receiving shipment of salt until June.
That's when you need it.
Yeah.
And that was under a budget amendment.
Well, that was, that was one reason why years ago we built a huge salt dump.
Yeah.
Because until a few years ago, we only had, I mean, we had like a garage of salt, basically. You could basically, I guess, salt the town once.
The past thirty years, that salt lot has paid for it, so.
Awesome, yeah.
And keeping our roads, roadworthy.
Yeah, no, I, I remember, I remember, we had the old.
Oh, yeah.
I remember we had the garage and Mark would be fretting for salt every year.
I, our roads are perfect.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, well, I will, I will move that we authorize the mayor to sign this, um, S H A supplemental letter. Second from Ken, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go, Pat.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, this looks like an original, it's in color.
We have an original right here.
Okay, that one's color, it looked original.
Yeah, I'll get it, my report's coming up.
All right, mayor's report.
Okay, uh, back to school safety, uh, now the children are heading back to school in all four counties, please be careful as you drive in and around town, stay alert at school bus stops. And when kids are crossing the streets, police updates, utilizing the original police task force study along with guidance from law enforcement, law enforcement professionals. We are continuing to research public safety options for the town. Uh, Councilman Phoebus has been involved in every meeting, Councilman King has joined into a few of the meetings. Uh, given the importance and the depth of the responsibility that surrounds public safety, we want to ensure that we've researched this issue thoroughly before providing options to the town council for their ultimate decision. Those options so far are, stay with the state troopers, I have to say, this is not recommended for several reasons. There's a recent report of, uh, the state troopers actually speaking up in Walkersville, saying they're not providing adequate coverage, and there's some other concerns. Just allowing the counties to cover us, that would give us no local dedicated force, it would cost us no money either, no additional money, we already pay county taxes. Uh, personally, I would oppose that.
Although we would probably lose what comes back.
You would lose your tax numbers from Frederick County and Carroll County.
We would lose our, we would lose some, yeah, we would lose some money from the two counties.
Yeah, well, actually, Carroll County does not factor police into theirs.
That's right, they pulled it out, but Frederick still does.
Debbie gets a grant from the state for the, for those police, and we would lose that too, so you probably lose four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, you, I, I don't know if you're comparing apples to apples, you're not really losing, you're not paying anything out, so, of course you wouldn't get it, but your papers are right.
Right, but the savings, instead of being a million, would be six hundred thousand.
That's true, that's true, that's, 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 that's very true. So the options, again, let me start from the top, state troopers, staying with them, allowing the counties to cover us, no dedicated force. Start our own force, which is, has been actually recommended by the sheriffs of both counties and other professionals and other people that have their forces. And, uh, an option that we had to take off the table, that would really be the option that I would promote to the council, would be to go with either sheriff's department. Let Carroll County cover us all the way or Frederick County, but that will not happen, the sheriffs will not do it, they are elected officials, there was recent legislation passed in Carroll County. That'll actually have no impact on the sheriffs because they are independent, and they will not cover us, they will not deputize to cross, uh, county lines. Uh, so our four options, we're kinda, Ken and I are distilling this down, but it's looking closer and closer to what could be our own force unless we stay with the troopers. And Ken said, if money's not an issue, you add some troopers.
So both the county sheriffs on each side recommended, given our size and circumstance that we get our own force?
They have, they, they have, so that would be our options, given the, let me get back to where I was at, we searched the four firearms. Uh, should we decide on a change? I just want the council to know, it would approximately, it would take approximately a year before we could do so. One, we have a six-month, uh, uh, warning or kick-out clause, termination, uh, clause. And it would take us another six months of what Ken and I are working on to finally give you all a recommendation for you to make a decision, so it would take a year. Uh, that was important because the troopers are interested to know, how long do they have? Well, at a minimum, I don't know how long they have, we could stay with the Maryland state troopers, but at a minimum, it would be a year. Uh, moving down, in the meantime, just to let our community know and to let the town council know, uh, we have strengthened our public safety coverage, we picked up coverage by both counties. I have to tell you, Sheriff Jenkins and Sheriff Dewey's have been very helpful, informative, they've actually, uh, offered up, if we were to do something, they would, we wouldn't have to hire a consultant. They would be our consultant to pick the chief and to start a force, they would let us piggyback on their purchases, they've been very, very helpful. Uh, and to that end, we had a meeting that was called by the Frederick County Emergency Management as far as our nine eleven, to see how our nine eleven calls are routed. Well, that meeting just happened to fall on nine eleven, and in that meeting, we had not only the sheriffs, we had representatives of every, uh, fire, EMS, emergency management for both Carroll and Frederick counties. I came up with this diagram to show how the calls are routed. If you cannot read that diagram, there's a reason for that. Or the Frederick County Emergency Department, what was his name?
Jack Markie.
Jack Markie is gonna rewrite that, we're gonna put it on a nice poster, and we're gonna distribute it so the town council can understand how our police and EMS nine-one-one calls are routed, cause it gets confusing.
It would've been nice if they were here and you shared that.
What, they, I wrote that while they were here, and we all looked at it when we were done and we all scratched our heads, so let's rewrite that. But it's cause you have to hit certain cells if you're on cell phone, if you do a landline call, you're fine, they can immediately tell where you're at for both police and fire. The, the, where it gets a little, uh, cloudy is when you hit a cell, a cell tower, cause that could screw them up a little bit. And if you're in town or out of town, however you're out of, anyway, we have a beautiful map coming forward for town council to look at and for our citizens to know how the calls are routed.
Anything would be beautiful compared to that.
I got two police officers to respond to a cow running down the road.
I know, you did, yeah, and that's a whole nother issue that we'll have to go into another meeting. Revitalization, the Carroll County Hospital Center is partnering with Monocacy Health Partners to, uh, turn the clo, to turn the closed-down SuperFresh, uh, uh, facility into a healthcare center. The fifty-six hundred square foot former grocery store closed in two thousand and eleven and will now become the health and wellness pavilion. Uh, that's gonna add a lot of life now to that area, that's been vacant for years, it's been a little bit of a hangout, uh, so it's great to see that revitalization. Uh, we look to see those services starting in two thousand and sixteen, I'd like to thank Heather and Evan for doing the research for my report, thank you, Evan. Uh, we have hired a new Main Street manager to strengthen our Main Street program, uh, to take advantage of grant opportunities, to improve programming as well as Main Street revitalization efforts. We welcome Ashley Collier as our new Main Street manager. Ashley comes from a strong background in government, business development, community relations. Her background is constituent liaison and academy coordinator for Congressman Bartlet. Another related experience along with her passion and innovative thinking and strong work ethic will be assets to our Main Street goals. Our new town hall, where else here on the street, say hello, happening around town, October third and fourth will be the Mount Airy Fall Festival, you know, it's now held up at the Volunteer Fire and Carnival grounds. There'll be crafters, vendors, delicious foods, uh, stay tuned for more information, on October seventeenth, Mount Airy's first Beers, Beards, Beers and Brats Festival being the rail yard. Uh, I gotta tell you, I think Larry's been involved in that, Amethyst, she's been promoting this all over town, and Larry, I don't know how you do it. You're working on your beard, very good.
Dude, they have a mustache beer holding contest, I saw that, I thought you're not gonna enter.
I gotta tell you, there's gonna be so many vendors there, so many unique vendors, this is gonna be, uh, a fantastic event, so I encourage the community to come out to this, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, unfortunately, it's on the same day that Mary Beth is running a marathon, but I will pivot between Baltimore and here, so.
Mary Beth, I hope you're feeling better if you're watching.
I can't say hi, Bob. Uh, October eighteenth, at ten AM, will be the annual Making Strides, uh, for breast cancer walk at Watkins Park. In two thousand and fourteen, we had close to twelve hundred walkers and we raised over a hundred thousand dollars, so we'd like to see if we can beat that this year. Uh, we did, uh, volunteer opportunities, still volunteer opportunities, especially on Water and Sewer Commission, are available. Uh, let me see here, the community forums, this community forum this month will be September nineteenth, but it's gonna be a walking mayor's forum, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, Carroll Hospital Center and the Healthy Carroll. So we're actually gonna take a walk, we're gonna start here, we're gonna walk down the Larry Hushour Rails to Trails. And, uh, we're gonna discuss some of the new historical signage that, uh, Bill was instrumental in seeing us, uh, put up as well as Dick. These three are like the three, uh, men of Mount Airy right here. So, uh, join us for that walk and learn a little bit and look at the historic signs.
I would say four, yeah, I mean.
The four bit, well, and actually Doc, Doc, I forgot about Doc.
I mean, you can't, I mean, this is twice now, don't forget, just say all of them.
Doc, well, sure, I got, I got Doc over there.
Poor Bob.
The only four.
And so, that concludes my mayor's report, we have no, uh, appointments as well.
All right.
Oh, community center update, or I guess I have to grab that too. Uh, as an update, uh, just so you all know, the importance of this community center is getting greater. Uh, the town has actually displaced the Marines, which I'm glad I had no part of. Uh, we've actually, uh, took over the space downstairs for offices, it's no longer a meeting space the way it used to be. Uh, the town has built out the remainder of the basement into town offices. Town hall is now at maximum capacity, the only time, we can't even let people use this room during the day anymore, because we need this for our meeting room now, so. Town hall, in addition, we've always leaned on the fire company, was, recently, there's been some revelations where some of their use up there, and I don't wanna speak for them, and it may be temporary. I don't wanna get hit with a bunch of calls from the fire department, but I understand there have been some recent limitations, they had a fire up there, and that may also be limited in the future. Uh, town council's directive was to explore the medium option community center in the large flat iron building, uh, and that may, and, and how that may work and be programmed. With this direction, we could also explore funding and parking options, funding options were raised by Dick, parking options by somebody else, so we'll explore all those options. Following up on a council's request to have a study of potential, uh, uh, center at the renovated flat iron building, we had asked Streets and Roads to evaluate the closing of Park Avenue. I don't know if we actually formally asked you or it just came up, but that's where it should go.
We asked you.
Okay, you asked me, okay, well, one of us talked to the other one.
Recommended you.
Okay, so, so closing of Park Avenue would be necessary if we were to get a large flat iron, uh, uh, building. Uh, however, a member of Streets and Roads, who's also a member of the fire company, expressed concerns with the Park Avenue closure, and the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, uh, also has some concerns about that closure. We need to thoroughly vet that issue before we even move forward.
It came out at EDC also, the same, the same thing.
Well, and it might be the same people, and so I've talked to Barney, we are arranging a meeting with all the key players, uh, regarding that, we have to thoroughly vet that before we move forward. Uh, if we can't overcome that obstacle, we need to move on, we'll come back to town council. Uh, if we can overcome it, we just really don't want one person standing up and saying it won't work. You have to show us why it won't work, and we're gonna have to study why it doesn't work, okay? So we will look at that, the task force held a regular monthly meeting on September third and continued reviewing programming of what it might look like. At that point, we weren't aware of the potential objection to closing the street. Uh, so we continued work on that, we also discussed how the medium-sized option would look in a flat iron building and decide how we would best present it to town council. No finest, final decision were made, and we are still reviewing, uh, concerns from Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, redundant, I don't know who wrote my report. Uh, the next scheduled meeting will be October first, it's the first Thursday in the month, citizens are, please come out, express your concerns, get involved, write into the papers, it's not always the best way to get involved. Uh, you need to come to the meetings, and they're out there and they're public. Uh, we'll update the town council at the October meetings on our findings of the issues mentioned in this report, that does conclude.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, beautification, Parks and Rec, Jason?
All right, uh, for beautification, we had, um, Mary Ann resign as secretary, she had a, uh, job change, so she is no longer our secretary. Um, but she's gonna help out as much as possible.
She's still, she's still, she's still on beautification, she's just.
She, she's resigned from all of it, but, uh, as we're working throughout the community, if she can join somewhere, we are more than welcome.
Mary Ann Gaver.
Sorry to hear that, she's been pretty upset.
Um, as of right now, um, in my last few reports, I mentioned about a town cleanup day. And, um, as the commission goes around and looks at all the parks and we're, we're doing work at, at those types of places, uh, those locations, there's right now a, a hold on town cleanup day. Just because the parks look great as far as litter and those types of things, so right now that's, that's on hold. The beautification commission put a spotlight, um, at the Wildwood, uh, park, uh, to highlight the iron, uh, sign there. And unfortunately, that was stolen, um, and so we're gonna take a look at.
Sign or the spotlight?
No, the spotlight, the sign's still there thankfully. Um, and we're gonna take a look at, um, possibly installing a permanent one for that one.
We got a projector by where the computers.
As of right now, um, and I just wanna make the council aware, um, that, uh, the park signs that are at all the parks right now. We allocated, or the council allocated, uh, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars for the park signs. The actual of that was twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five, so it's a difference of two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen. And I'm just making the council aware that that money's just gonna be shifted to the tree trimming line option. I wasn't, uh, I was told that nothing needed to be official, that it's still under beautification, so that money's gonna be re-appropriated or reallocated to the tree trimming, uh, fund. Um, the next meeting for beautification is actually tomorrow, here at town hall, September fifteenth at seven PM. For Parks and Recs, uh, we recently received funding for a bocce ball court at Prospect Park for two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, there will be two bocce ball courts, ten foot wide by sixty foot long, grass surface, pressure-treated lumber. They recently, um, and this was a, an emergency move, uh, by paving in Streets and Roads, I don't know if you were directly involved, uh, Councilman Phoebus. But they paved into Wildwood Park for the handicap spots that were just kinda rock located, and since the paving was here, they went through there and, and paved that off too. So that's off of the daycare center circle. Um, we're looking into, uh, resurfacing the skate park, um, and then we also have a, uh, playground equipment grant for East West Park, um, there. And our next meeting is this coming Thursday, September seventeenth at eight PM. And my last thing is that, has nothing to do with Parks and Recs and beautification, but I'm expecting my third in February.
Oh, man.
Congratulations.
You see, you saw that, didn't you?
I think it's gonna have a lot to do with Parks and Recs.
And it's another boy. My wife's not happy. And it's another boy, my wife's not happy.
And if you count, if you count back, it was that night we did the, the car, the movie and the cars and all that kinda stuff.
She wasn't there.
Oh, wait. Only Councilman K. All right. Bob, uh EDC and planning.
Okay, you, you ready for this? Uh my, my report is ver- my report is very short tonight, um our MXD and OPE zoning are being reviewed by the town attorney. And the Route twenty-seven quarter study continues. Our next meeting will be on Monday, September twenty-first, that is a week early, so that the town attorney can go over those, all three of those items with us and make us understand. Um so it's Monday, September the twenty-first, seven o'clock at Town Hall. Um EDC, um new chair is Paul Clay, um EDC's really trying to find a way to help businesses open and existing businesses remain open. Um our next meeting is Wednesday, September the twenty-third at seven thirty at Town Hall, and I have four unrelated items down here. I was honored yesterday to attend the graduation of our mayor from the Maryland Municipal League's Academy of Excellence. He is now a fellow in the school of po- a fellow, he's a fellow of local governance in the School of Public Policy at the University of Maryland College Park, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to announce that uh somewhere a little bird told me that Jason's wife is having a baby.
It was Jason.
It was, it was a Ja- no, it was on, it was on Facebook today. Do not forget the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, which is this Thursday night, November, or September the seventeenth, six o'clock, Watkins Park. A great time will be had by all.
And we're gonna announce the Volunteer of the Year.
And my next item is that the Volunteer of the Year will be announced on that very night, thank you Jason and Pat for screwing up my. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's my report.
All right, recycling and sanitation.
All right, thank you, um so Recycling Sanitation did not have a meeting last month, we do have a meeting this month, it's on the sixteenth, this Wednesday at seven o'clock at Town Hall. Um two things that I was gonna bring up for recycling, one was I got a letter from Frederick County Government. Um they are sponsoring a residential household hazardous waste drop-off event, that's October seventeenth from eight AM till noon, and this is at the Public Safety Training Facility located in Frederick, uh fifty-three seventy Public Training Place, and this is being provided at no charge for Frederick County residents. Um and so we have a flyer which I'll end up leaving with town staff that anybody can come in and get a copy of it um for that, so that's the one. The other thing that I found was interesting is that in the Chesapeake Magazine, um I'd like to congratulate that three of our own town employees, Barney Quinn, Heather Smith, and Monica Wireback ended up giving the town of Mount Airy a utility spotlight, uh discussing achievements that we've had in the town from water and uh the sanitation and recycling portion, so thank you guys for keeping good words about the town, and uh that concludes my report.
Can we get that up on the town website?
I don't know if we can get it, but if you guys can do it.
Streets and Roads, Ken.
Yes, thank you, um once, we uh had several complaints about speeding in uh Locksy Boulevard in Nyaham, and also a discussion was had to lower the speed limit on uh Main Street between Hood and, and Prospect. Both these uh requests, uh recommendations went to Brian just to get a speed count on how much speed, speeders are on those roads, so. We'll wait until we get that report back, and he said that would be done in the near future to uh do a speed count on both those areas to, to see what the speed is there. Also, it was recommended, as the mayor spoke, uh to do a study, if Park Avenue would be closed on the effect it would have on the town. It was just a recommendation that was sent to Heather, and maybe it could be included in the uh traffic study that was done. And uh the uh uh next meeting, I'm not sure yet, because a couple of the members are gonna be off, so the next meeting, I'm not sure the dates at, when our meeting's gonna be next month, but we will, let, of course, be on the website, that's all.
All right, Water and Sewer, that's me. Uh this is kind of an odd timing that we've actually met Water and Sewer, because we're meeting late, met twice since our last uh meeting, but I'll, I'll start with this. This is a nice article that was in the MML publication, you can see that's a pipe filled with grease, and it's an article about this town, doesn't discuss the town, but about how they fought their water and, you know, grease problems and their fog ordinance and everything, and, well, it doesn't say it, this is an article about Mount Airy and how, you know, successful we have been in clearing up the water and grease problems that we have in town. Apparently, not everybody has these ordinances, so. Uh we're going through that, and I guess Scott got this one, there's a great article in the Chesapeake Magazine, which is from the American Water Works Association on you know, basically our Main Street water upgrades and our sewer work and everything, nice article in there, put together by Barney.
We're, we're a bit of a model, aren't we?
I think we are in a lot of ways.
Lot of ways, we're a bit of a model, so hats off to the staff for, for doing that.
I got one go back if I can, thank you for Pete and the television audience, I think Mary ended up saying it too. Um we also have a shredding event for the town, I know people look forward to that, um I know that some people have lots and lots of materials to shred. Um so it's this Saturday from ten to twelve o'clock at Watkins Park, um so I wanna thank you again to our commission members for giving a reminder.
Is there a shredding company that's donating that?
Yes, there is a shredding company that's donating that, and I'm not sure what the name of it is, but it's also battery recycling. If you have batteries of any size or kind, bring those down to.
This Saturday, ten to twelve, where at?
Ten to twelve, Watkins Park.
Watkins Park, great.
Last time they came, they brought two trucks, they ended up, I think it was about a ton they shredded, and I've got just about that much now, we've been, we've been downsizing.
All right, um back on Water and Sewer, okay, big, big news in the hot water and sewer topic is flushable kitty litter, flushable kitty litter, it's not, it's don't. Yeah, that's it, yeah, okay, if it, if it, if, you know, it clogs up the pipes in your house, or the pipes from your house to the street, it will be your problem. But we also don't want it to end up in, in our wastewater system to ultimately become our problem, so flushable kitty litter, despite what they're telling you it's not, okay. Uh one of the things that um Water and Sewer is looking at is essentially changing our late fee for water bills. I've come in here um in the mornings when the late water bills were due, essentially what, it's, it's become apparent that.
And you don't have to read each one, Peter.
Okay, apparent, what happens is, most people, you know, they get that nice little white water card bill, and they pay based on that, okay? But there are a substantial portion of people in town who don't pay till they get the pink card with the miniscule late fee on it. And there, there's a substantial number of people who are treating that pink card, or at least it appears that they're treating that pink card as their actual water bill. And I was here one day, and there was a line waiting to pay with the pink cards. Now, the problem is, of course, that's required, that's to issue two bills and go, you know, and mail double and print double, and there's a substantial additional expense in that. The thought process is that if we make a, put a real late charge on that bill, it might discourage people from actually waiting and paying the pink card. Currently, what we do is the difference between the regular bill and the late bill on the pink card is one and a half percent. Which has no real basis in reality, because, you know, if, if, you know, it, it, it costs us the same to issue the late charge bill. Whether, whether your bill's five hundred dollars or it's a hundred dollars, it, it isn't the same thing, so we're thinking we need to actually perhaps change that to an actual flat charge, Jason?
Uh is it possible, and I'm not a late payer of my water bill, um is it possible that the small white card gets unnoticed and they wait for a colored?
It, it could be, but.
Does it cost us any extra to send a colored first time instead of a colored the second time?
You mean something instead of white?
I have to tell you, I've accidentally overlooked mine a few times, I think 'cause it was white.
White probably looks like an advertisement.
I'm not using it as an excuse, but in all of the mail that you get, and you're shuffling through, you can miss a white. Change the color of the water bill.
Yeah, change the color of the white bill.
Does it cost, how much more to print that, I don't know who I should be directing.
Well, no, we would buy the card stock pre, pre-print and the color. It wouldn't cost, I, I, you know.
That might be a good first way to talk.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to go at it.
Maybe like yellow? Or, now, what is it, yellow is already a late one?
Something neon.
No, pink is the late one.
Pink is lit.
How would I know? Yeah, go with like a day glow.
I was thinking maybe a light blue, something like that color.
Anything, anything different.
Just a suggestion. And then raise the late fee to two hundred dollars, 'cause if you miss the blue one, then, then you get the pink one.
We will, we will check on changing the card color, Marcia can let us know, I mean, obviously, I obviously will run out of whatever our stock is, but next time we order, I, it's probably not a big deal to order it in a different color. That's a, Jason, I, I think it's an excellent idea.
Excellent idea.
But um we still deal with the issue that, I mean, there are these, they're not all losing the white card, if you do it, you realize it's the sa- it's always the same people.
But if there's a line, there's a line at the door.
One and a half percent on a hundred dollar phone bill, that's only a dollar fifty late charge.
Right, right. And, and, and most of these people figure for the extra buck fifty, I'm not gonna pay the bill for another month and a half.
Yeah.
All right, so, so we're thinking of, of increasing that.
I agree.
What I would like to have done at this point is, is, is throw this at Tom, okay? To find out exactly what we can do, 'cause I remember many years ago, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, reading a Comcast case where they challenged Comcast late fees. And Comcast had to pay big dollars back, because their late fees had no basis in reality. So I'm not sure what we can do.
What you base it on, good point.
Right, so is there some basis for it, now, now, I will, I will ta- I will step you through the process, you get a white card, if you don't pay it, about thirty days later, you get a pink card. If you don't pay that, a week, a week to two weeks. A week to two weeks later, you get a door hanger, okay? That means.
On your desk.
Your desk. A week to two weeks later, you will get a door hanger, meaning we actually send a guy out to put a hanger on your door that says you're overdue. Now, when the door hanger goes out, the charge, there's an extra forty dollar charge. But you have to realize, we actually had to pay somebody to go out to your house and hang a door hanger there. If you don't pay after you get the door hanger, you are then turned off within a couple days, and there's an additional charge of thirty bucks to have the water turned back on. Now, you have to realize, to do that, we've actually sent somebody out there at this point three times for seventy dollars, once for the door hanger, once to turn off, and once to turn on. And I've been told from Brian and others that we've actually had a few people who've turned their water on themselves. And we've had to, I think, go out with the police, and we've, and we've had to go out with the police. Oh, switching house numbers with the neighbors, so we door hang in the wrong door, that's a good idea, I hadn't thought about that. There you go, Pat, change offices.
I learn from the councilman every day.
I can tell you in the past, we are now averaging eighty to one hundred door hangers every time.
Oh, that's many.
That's a lot.
I mean, people have three months to pay their water.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they, they have lots of time to do this, it's just.
I did have one citizen, color. I had one citizen complain that he should not pay any fees, but I did explain to him, it costs us man hours to go out, the other citizens that pay their bills on time pay for these man hours, and it's not fair for them to incur the cost for some who do not pay their bill, so.
That ultimate seventy.
I think you all are heading in the right direction.
The ultimate seventy dollar charge, which is what you would get at the end, you know, the administrative backend on that, if you ever sit around here and watch what Mary's doing and interacting with Brian and the guys, it takes a lot of administrative time, and somebody goes to every house three times.
And not to mention the phone calls, when he said they're gonna pay, they're not gonna, Marcia gets involved, I agree.
So we're, we're hoping that maybe we can head some of this off, if we actually maybe front load some of the, some, some of the pink card charges. You know, to, to really get these people to, to pay, so we'd like to have Tom, let us know what, what we can do on that.
Get a consensus from the council that it's.
Everybody agree we should go down that road?
Maryland Public Services or something has, has a deal with, you know, if they're gonna shut your electricity off, they have to go through them first, simply because if you, if you're unemployed or, you know, under some circumstances, they don't shut your electricity off, are we doing anything like that?
No, something different, this is next, next thing I'm.
Yeah, the council never answered, you know, it's always been sticky, when you ask for a consensus, nobody responds, we kind of.
I, I will, I will, I, I will, I mean, I'm saying I think we ought to have Tom look into that, what we can do charge wise, everybody else think that's.
Again, look into also, like Jason said, changing the color.
Well, that's, 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 I mean, we'll do that internally, that's not, we'll just do that.
Peter, I'll second, I'll second it.
All right, well, it doesn't need to be moved, it's kind of a consensus to let, to have Tom look at this and that maybe we wanna go this way.
I agree.
All right, all right, so let, kind of let us.
Move forward.
I just remember, like I said, it wouldn't even come up to me, but I remember reading this case a few years of, years back, so, uh so I want Tom to do all this.
And I am concerned about people that, you know, somehow end up unemployed, I mean, my wife and I were just unemployed, so I understand the acts that you go through. So, I, I don't know if there's something we.
They could, they call Marcia sometimes, and we do make accommodations.
We will work with anybody.
We really work with people, except habitual people we stop to then.
I can, I can honestly tell you, now that I've been doing this for a really long time, I guarantee you there is not another municipality in the state of Maryland that doesn't work more with its constituents to try to not turn that water off.
Yeah, I always work with them, we work with them.
You know, I, I figured we did.
We, we have people that are way behind, but they're making payments.
We, we do payment structures.
You know, you pay a little bit, every, you know, instead of just getting that three month bill, if every month you pay a little bit towards the current and a little bit of the past, we're like, okay, that's fine.
Just show good faith.
I was just, that's, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, no.
Do you get the same, do you get the same people most of the time, the same people?
Yes. Out of those eighty to one hundred door hangers, it's usually five to ten people get terminated.
And some of those houses are vacant, some of them are foreclosure, so.
A lot of them now are vacant.
All right, what I've handed to you is something that I, I will be putting on the agenda next month, all right, I just wanted to hand, so everybody can review it this month. Um the, you know, Water and Sewer would like the Town Council to, I guess, you know, pass some kind of request, we can really do it anytime, that, that, that uh you know, that basically the town engineer review potential sources for additional water, in order to meet what our goals and objectives are under the master plan. Uh there should be a review done that should include, but, you know, not be limited to well exploration, purchase of land for recharge, purchase donation of water rights, um in order to sort this out. So we'd basically like, you know, essentially the town staff to give us a broad overview, and if you can pass that on to Barney. You know, just, well, so we've got a plan, yes.
Quick question though on this verbiage, says water not to be used or anything annexed after January first, two thousand?
That was a date that came, is our, Dick, that, that, the date we picked, was that, was it, was that was a state date, wasn't it?
So is that to say that our water capacity in the past fifteen years has been used up by anything that's been annexed prior to two thousand?
Yeah, there, there, there's probably property that was annexed prior to two thousand that has ended up being developed after two thousand. But this two thousand, January first, two thousand date was, was coming from a state code.
It was two thousand and one, that annexation for Sterling Glen.
So that means Sterling, that means Sterling Glen in two thousand and one would not qualify into this and get water.
Well, we're not saying. Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, anything, this says anything annexed, that's the only point I was trying to clarify.
Well, no, the key is that, the key is coming from, this is coming from the state code, the state code has given priority to this, there's nothing we can do about that issue. This is, you read, this is from the state code, uh Article five, five oh one from the state code, so this is state code verbiage here, the state has set that date. So we can't do anything about that, but we.
We need to understand it better, huh Scott?
And that's why I'm just handing this out now, we're not, there's no proposal before you formally, but what we're, what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna want essentially the town engineer and, and everybody to come together with a plan, okay? Here's how much water we need to get everywhere that is on our master plan, here's the best ways for us to do it.
And I, and I think what we talked about at that water song of ours, cause I said.
Yeah.
Was that, that not only do we need this water for our, to, to fulfill our master plan, but water is probably gonna be one of the very next issues that is just, you look what's happening to the water in California and Arizona right now, okay, it's, wa- water is in terrible shape there, and it's taking their economies down, and it's taking the, it's taking the states down. We have got to find water or have access to water or. We have got to find water, or have access to water, or know what all the water sources are around us. That's the only way we can serve the people who live here.
Uh, feel a little different about that. The people that live here all have water, they will have water in the future. There's the allocation that the M D lets us pull up from the ground. If there was a problem with one well, they would simply let us pull it from another well. We are in no danger financially for lack of water. The reason we would need more water is to fulfill the master plan and to maybe see some long-term goals, but not to back up anything that we currently have. And to that end, we decided it would be a good idea for we as a town to provide that larger water source, because no one individual developer or homeowner could find themselves that we would let the government step in, find that water source. However, the taxpayers would not be burdened with that cost. Ultimately, anyone tapping into the system would have to pay a fee, and so it would just be using the leverage of the town to help provide for a future, but not to ensure the future of those that are currently here. They're covered.
We, we just said the same thing.
But California is failing for people that are there, and so it's not really a good analogy.
The only other comment I'd make is that we do have a W R E that should be in sync with master plan.
Yep.
So, I mean, we do have a plan going forward, it might need to be revisited, but we have a very comprehensive plan that says, here's all the water resources in Mount Airy. So.
It's for the future, it's for the future.
Right, but we, but when it comes to fully building out, what's in town? Okay, I mean, there are projects in town that are sitting waiting for water. Okay?
For infill and development?
There are projects.
Because this is gonna get into a whole lengthy discussion.
There are projects in town that are waiting for water.
Right.
Okay? This is to make sure that we get water for them, in town, not out of town.
And I'm an advocate of water, not for any one, not for any one project of development. I just don't wanna see something happen in Mount Airy where we don't have enough water.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be the reason to find more sources. I mean, we, we, there's substantial water under our ground, it's just what the M D is letting us pull.
Well, that's true, very true, yes.
Yeah, there's water, we have water underneath of us, it's what they allow. But if we find more, the point I'm trying to make is if we find more, the M D is not gonna let us pull it anyway.
Dick's, Dick's putting on his water hat.
Put this very simply is that we all agree there is not enough water permitted by M D E to meet the requirements of the master plan. What this is saying is that.
Master plan is not a requirement, it's a vision, so let's be careful to say it's a requirement. Requirement means you have to do it, it's a vision.
But implied, implied in there, and in the zoning and everything else, that if somebody has undeveloped property, and they meet the goals of the master plan, they meet all the, dot the i's, cross the t's of the zoning and everything else, that we as a town have an obligation to make sure that they're provided the water to accomplish whatever it is they wanna do, infill, redevelopment. We don't have that now. The, the town needs to take a long-range look at how you're going to have water available in the future to meet those future demands for infill and redevelopment as envisioned in the master plan. This is saying, we need to start out by taking a look at the alternatives. M D E is not going to increase our permit simply because there's water in the ground. They may increase that permit because we purchase land, we purchase water rights from people outside of Mount Airy to go to them. But we need to look down the road and say, what are we gonna do over the next year or so? So five years from now, the council's not sitting here saying, we don't have any water. You, I'm sorry, you can't build your house on your vacant lot that you've owned here for.
Well, easy, stop there, because every lot has an E D U. So don't, let's not break it down to per house, because it's not that small.
We have a number of houses that are rated at two E D U's and stuff, and, and they.
Because every plotted lot has an E D U.
One.
One.
One, I got that. That's one, that's all we're required. I mean.
That would be, that would be probably.
From a planning perspective, that's all you're required. So let's be careful to say what we're required to do. I, I got you on the forward plan.
No restaurants.
But let's not say we're required to do it.
Probably no community centers.
That's not, that's not what we're saying.
All right. Well, Dick and I, that's why we have the water summit, we always see this a little differently.
An E D U is for residents.
I got that.
We have lots that you can't put residences on.
That's fine.
So therefore, they can't develop those lots, because they can't function on one E D U.
If you're a Sanford Zone commercial.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think what we're saying, Pat, is we would rather have, we would rather have too much than not enough.
I agree, I just wanna be very careful how it's framed. Water's been a contentious issue in this town.
None of us are, yeah.
We should be back to that picking and picking and picking, and we can't do that.
Scott?
I'm with you, future water source.
I, I knew this is a future discussion, the only question I have, this motion that potentially would be coming forward.
This, this was actually the motion as it reached Water and Sewer, this is not a motion for us at this point, I'm just letting you all know.
Right, so I wanted to clarify, this is just for water commission to do what they normally do, maybe in conjunction with planning, is to look at the W R E, look at the municipal growth element document, the master plan, and say, hey, let's reevaluate and do this for the future, which falls in their charter? So it's nothing that needs to be.
I'm gonna let the chair speak.
Now Dick's gonna get you.
No, I'll go for, I'm just going for the commission, it's the commission's duties and responsibilities, it's a charter.
This is asking for endorsement of the town council to commit, uh.
That we wanna do this.
Staff resources so that the options can be together.
And I hope you do.
I hope you do, I support it.
And that's, that's all it's asking for.
Yep.
It's asking, it's asking maybe able to commit our engineering.